Hey Jen.
Hello.
How you doing? Sorry, I forget that that comes from the town of Alta and not from Jen Clancy. So when I was searching, I sometimes I get confused.
No worries. We are broadcasting just to let you know. I don't know if anybody's watching yet, but yeah, sorry, I'm a little scattered here these days.
Yeah, me too, frankly.
I don't like it. It doesn't feel very good.
No.
Um.
Okay, do I have the ability to share a screen?
You do. I'm gonna make you the host right now.
Okay.
Um, or you.
I will probably.
Should, but uh, let me get you to be the actual co-host.
Oh, give me a break. Why does this do this? I thought I had fixed this with my uh PowerPoint. Hold on.
Hey Polly. Hey Piper.
Hi Jen.
I'm not sure if you heard me, but we are broadcasting just to let you know.
I did, and I'm uh broadcast, I'm recording both.
Oh, okay.
Two things. Chris.
Thank you.
Chris convinced me to record with my iPhone as well.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Hey Cliff.
Hi colleagues.
Hi.
Everything is working out perfectly. There are no problems.
I'm so glad to hear that's your day.
Wow, yeah, really.
Oh my goodness. At least we could still laugh.
Right?
Hey Mike.
I was gonna let him respond before I moved him over. I think he's still connecting to audio though, it looks like.
John, did you walk up to the top of Sunnyside?
Yes. I would have stopped, but I was late for a two o'clock Zoom. I have to go to Alta, I have to go to Alta to ski and then go home to work. It's much better than down here. It's ridiculous. Have to make sure I have, I have to make sure I have Polly's latest stuff, which is perfect. Let's just say.
Hello.
Hello Sheridan.
Adopted and go. Hello.
Hi John.
Hello Sheridan. You're not in a van. Sadly for you.
But you're at the top of, is that Collins?
Yeah.
Yeah, nice.
Is that Collins? I thought it was Sunnyside.
I'm sorry, yeah, Sunnyside.
Hi.
I don't have a coat, so talk fast.
Sheridan, Sheridan, I thought it wasn't about the van. It's about the places you can go in the van.
It completely is. And here I am in Alta, so I can't complain.
All right, we're in Alta. We're already, we're already where we want to be.
Yes. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'll lose, I'll lose the glasses as soon as the sun goes behind Wildcat here.
That is pretty early these days.
Yeah, short, short days. Is that your office Cliff? I love the Bill, Bill photo.
Yeah, I'm in my office, yeah.
I like it. Do you still have that employee um application that?
That was a classic. I kept it for a long time. That was a classic.
One of my all-time favorites.
How not to apply for a job.
Pretty much. So good. Is everybody getting out skiing? Cool.
I've gotten out a little bit, but I'm looking forward to more snow.
Yeah, it can only get better from here.
I'm hearing some back to back.
But that would be bad.
Uh oh.
What do we have?
Hi Polly.
Hi, I've just been muted in the corner here, listening.
Hi Jen. Hi Margaret.
Yes, I see now. Hello Margaret, Mayor and Elise. I didn't see you before.
Hi Harris, hi Elise.
All right, it is three o'clock. Shall we get started? I, I need to read that statement again, or it's because it's less than a month.
No, you have to read the statement every time.
That's what I thought. Um, I don't have a copy of it. Let me see. Was it in, it wasn't in the meeting materials, I don't think, this time?
Jen's trying, Jen's on mute, but it looks like she's trying to send it to you.
I was gonna say I can email it to you, or it's on the town's website. What I can do either.
I can, I can go to the website. I think you asked me if I approved it, right?
Yeah, it's on the agenda page.
Okay.
There's a link right in the middle at the top. The December 4th date.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. All right. Um, so I will call the virtual work session of Wednesday, December 9th, of the Town Council of the Town of Alta, December 9th, 2022 order. This is an hour-long work session, and I'm going to read a determination about conducting Town of Alta public meetings without an anchor location, thanks to the pandemic. Uh, the mayor of the Town of Alta, that's me, Haris Sondak, hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who might be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code Section 52-4-2074 and Resolution 2020 R12. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percent and number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah has been largely, has been significantly higher since May 27th, 2020. The seven-day average for cases on December 2nd is 20, is 2,629 with about half the state's cases in Salt Lake County. As of December 2nd, 2020, there have been 925 deaths reported in Utah due to COVID-19. I'll add that the case rate currently is 1,179 per 100,000 in Salt Lake County. The meeting will, this meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All attendees will connect remotely. Attendees may join the webinar by registering for the meeting through the town website, which is www.townofalta.com, or the meeting can be watched on, uh, live on YouTube. Additionally, comments may be emailed to the town clerk reliever@townofalta.com. This determination will expire in 30 days on January 3rd, 2021 by me, Haris Sondak, and attested by, by the town clerk. Okay? All right. First item on our agenda is we have a half hour on land use amendments. As has been our practice, John, do you want to get us up to speed? You are muted, my friend.
Okay. Had to stop the barking dog. People, the delivery people always ring right when I'm starting a Zoom. But it's been like the fourth month in a row where we're discussing the same issue and how to, which is how to address exempting ski area structures but not buildings from our new setback in the Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone, structures which are not buildings. How do we limit that to the ski area? Yesterday, no, Friday, Polly emailed you all some new language, which I, which is the perfect jumping off point. Uh, I think it's perfect for addressing these issues. It basically um in section 10, 6A9, which is the FR zone related to the Upper Albion Basin Protection Zone, it lays out the new setback, new 100-foot setback for anything, restricting anything from construction within 100 feet of any waterway. But then it talks about notwithstanding one and two above, and this is the actual language, on US Forest Service property, structures which are not buildings and are for commercial recreation ski area operation or campground operations, such as lift towers, signs, avalanche control devices, snowmaking equipment, picnic tables and fire pits are exempt from these setbacks so long as and only if such structures comply with the requirements of the regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, including the US Forest Service, US Army Corps of Engineers, we've added the State Engineers Office, the Utah Division of Water Rights, Salt Lake Valley Health, we, and those two were added. Uh, we've always had Salt Lake Valley Health Department and the Salt Lake City Division of Public Utilities. And such approval, if required by those regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, shall be submitted to the building official. So we added a couple of agencies that would oversee things that would affect waterways and wetlands, and we added the building official to the mix.
Okay.
This again, would, this shows up also in section 10, 17, building permit required. And it provides the same possibility for exempting structures which are not buildings, which are, thank you, which are for commercial ski area operations and picnic area operations, since the ski area now has, well, doesn't matter who has the picnic area, but commercial picnic operations as well. What we've talked about in the past and what was, what kind of derailed us last time for a little timeout, uh, related to the Friends of Alta and the Alta Ski Area, were how do we narrow this proposed exemption to just the Albion Basin ski area issues so that it can't be expanded throughout everywhere else in the town? Uh, I think we've done that by, uh, in the Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone on US Forest Service property. Is it the first, we went back and forth on what to do with the building official and the town. Uh, first of all, in the past, many of these things have been approved without the town's participation or even knowledge at times. We wanted to be in, and the question was, how much do we want to be in? Do we want to have veto power? Do we want to just be part of the process? It doesn't look like we can have veto power if it's on federal property under federal jurisdiction. Uh, but if we're part of the process and we know about things that, and at the beginning, then we can discuss things like, uh, in the past, the lift tower in inappropriate locations, um, maybe we can have those things off in the future. So as a jumping off part, point, I think what we've got now is it ties the town into the building official. It narrows the possible exemptions down to Forest Service property only, and it does, it involves a pretty complete list of outside agencies that would be approving these things before they're built. So with that as a kickoff, you've all seen Polly's, uh, December 4th, 2020, uh, email, and it lays out these conditions. What is your, is it, is it far enough? Does it go far enough? Would you like to make any amendments? Um, just now we's open for a discussion.
So thanks, thanks for that um on-ramp to the discussion, John. That was really helpful. So I've got this all, I've got this document shared. This is the version that you were just reading, I believe. And um one change that, that we need to, we definitely want to be clear about is that we're talking about just your, on public land or um, for some things and private land for other things. This particular way of doing this doesn't put a lot of burden on the ski area in terms of seeking permission from us. It asks the ski area to include us when they have been notified that they have a permit. Conversation I had with Mike Mon this morning, um, and at some point we may want to hear from him directly, but let me say what I garnered out of that conversation is that he's concerned that the ski area will face multiple rules, I guess, or differing rules in places where they have private lots that are surrounded by public land. So there are lots in Albion Basin or in the, near the castle, for example, where um, the ski area will want to do things like run snowmaking lines or install a sign or something like that. And they may get permission from the Forest Service to do this on the public ground, but if the line were to run through a lot that they own, then they would also have to come to us and be subject to our zoning. then they would also have to come to us and be subject to our zoning. This was not an aspect that Cliff and I discussed earlier in the week, this, this particular patchwork. I think Cliff, you and I, when we talked about this, at least in my mind, we, I think we were thinking about private land that wasn't really embedded inside the special use permit. At least that's what was on my mind. So this adds a twist that I hadn't thought about, that I want to bring to the council for the, for discussion. So now Mike is interested in participating. Shall we hear from him for, for this? Or do you guys want to talk about this first, just amongst us?
We, I, I think we definitely want to hear from Mike Mon and Alta Ski Area. But maybe we should give the council members the opportunity to define the issue, then hear from Alta Ski Area and then come back to it. You know, the, the issue of inconsistent regulations on adjacent private lands has very consistently been phrased as relating to signs, posts, gates, even snowmaking equipment. And I'm very sympathetic to that. You know, very sympathetic to the operations of Alta Ski Area. Very few of us would be here without Alta Ski Area. Not to put too fine a point on it, I think the issue that this is going to come down to is ski lift structures and towers. And to take it to the next step, the idea that ski lift structures and towers on private land would be exempted from waterway setbacks. I don't believe that's within the intent of, of almost anybody on this call.
And can I jump in too as a legal matter? I think it would be very difficult for us to defend that Alta Ski Lifts gets exempt, but a homeowner doesn't get exempt.
Right. Right. And, and it gets even more complicated, this private land issue, because everything in the Albion Basin is a non-complying parcel. I mean, but the lots in Albion Basin subdivision, Albion sub-division in the Secret Lake area. So theoretically, nobody can do anything on those. Because they're not complying.
Well, does that mean that you couldn't run a snowmaking line through them?
I was just, I, I don't know. I was just thinking about that and I don't know the answer to that. It's interesting because a lift tower, I, I talked to the building official this morning. And there are certain things that are exempt and it's just a strange catch 22. So if you're doing a utility building under 200 feet, like a, but a building to house snowmaking equipment, you don't need a building permit. If you're doing a, I mean, the, the way it reads theoretically, anything that's built or constructed, it needs a building permit and the state code that impose, is imposed on us is the same way. But nobody really does permits for signs unless they're big monument signs. Nobody does permits for gates and it depends, you know, on, on just the size of them. However, so even if you can get a building exempted like a, like a hump house, there's still the zoning issue. So it doesn't need a building permit. But you still can't put it too close to the creek. So that becomes difficult. Now, the one thing that Kurt did talk about this morning is, is that a, a lift tower? Because if it's relation to life safety and the size, that would definitely need a building permit. So it just, it gets more and more complicated when you start looking at the possibilities of structures that are buildings, even structures that are buildings and private land. So I don't, I don't know the answer to, to a water line. But theoretically, you couldn't put a building on a non-conforming, non-complying lot.
John, can, I am curious, right now, our, with our current land code, our current zoning and ordinances and code without this change, what is the process right now for somebody to put something on their land that's not a building? Like, an example, the Veas and Towers that went in above the town on the road. I'm pretty sure some of those are on private land. Like what, what is the process for that to happen on private land right now versus this new Albion Basin Overlay Zone? All these other ordinance changes that we're talking about, like, well, tell me the difference between the process that's going to make for the town.
Well, and I don't know what happened with the Veas and Towers. The state and the feds did that. And, and we weren't involved. So if they're on private property, I, I mean, I don't have an answer to that.
No, I just, or just, just any example.
But any, anything in the Albion Basin. I mean theoretically, you can't put a tough shed. I mean, we talk about this all the time with the Albion Basin owners. You know, they want to drive a, a motor home and park it there and live in it. It's like, well, you can't do that in the watershed. They want to, I mean, basically you can't do anything on the parcels that aren't already built on right now in the Albion Basin. You can't construct anything. Now, I've never had anyone ask, and we've never had the issue come up about a water line, a water line or a sewer line. I don't know about that. Maybe Polly can, yeah, that's never happened.
Or example would be, you know, a Veas and Tower in Devil's Castle in private land. What would that process look like right now versus this current ordinance and changes that are in front of us?
And a lot of it, a lot of it, all the parcels in the Albion Basin, one of the reasons they're non-complying is because they're too small. I mean, you have to have an acre. So let's hope that if you have 50 acres in Devil's Castle, I think that's, it's either FR 50 or FR 20. You may have enough acreage and then it's a conditional use permit. And especially for public safety, I mean, it's not going to require sewer water. It would require some kind of access probably, but a, a lot of it depends on the size of the parcel.
The, where the Veas and Towers went to the north of town, may, were those even inside the town limits? I mean, they may be in the county, right, Elise?
I, I think, I feel like some of the MO ones might be, but I'm not sure.
I'll bet some of them are on that area that the ski area annexed in 2002. That's lovingly referred to as Grizzly Gulch, but it goes behind the town office all the way to the ridgeline in some areas.
And to Elise's point, don't we want oversight of those installations? Don't we want to be in the loop of knowledge about what's happening with those towers? You know, I don't think it has to be adversarial or onerous to see ourselves and how the lift company see themselves as partnering with the town and sharing information about these constructions.
Well, and, and I would concur with that. And maybe there is an example for us in the Foothills Canyon's Overlay Zone, which does not apply to Alta, but does apply to unincorporated counties, specifically Snowbird has to apply with the permit processes there. And I suspect Brighton as well. Maybe Laura is, is one who could talk to us about that, but I believe that ski areas get some sort of processes as part of the F cause. So it would give the uniformity potentially because it is dealing with the watershed. And so whether it's private land or forest land, and I believe I may be able to clarify that, but I believe that the Forest Service recognizes F cause and the restrictions there and whether, and the implementation there of whether it's private or forest land.
The Forest Service has told me that they, if we don't contradict their requirements or impede them complying with their own mission, that they give us a fair, they give the local jurisdiction a fair amount of deference. As long as we're not in conflict with them. That was my, that's kind of my impression. That's how you read that letter, that note, Polly, right from?
Yeah. And you know, if we wanted to go one step further even, I mean, this discussion about the building permit, I think is insightful and we were just discussing it. Or I was just thinking about it more recently, the idea that, you know, I think that we have struggled a little bit with distinguishing between a lift tower that clearly can have some real impacts and you know, a concrete pad for a picnic table or to put in a sign, right? If it's not too big of a sign. And so we're kind of struggling because we want to, you know, say, okay, the sign, there aren't that many impacts to a sign or to a picnic table, but there are to a lift tower. And so going the route of saying that if the Utah State Building Code would apply, which is linked directly to health and safety, which is part of what the Forest Service will allow us to regulate, then we can include that in our code as well. And so that may address some of the concerns, I think, that Councilmember Bork has mentioned and Councilmember Davis has kind of touched on, and the Friends of Alta.
I wonder if I could ask a question to all of my colleagues. It's a, it's a given that building codes are going to be followed and things are going to be constructed in a safe manner. Ultimately, that will be part of the process. However, especially with respect to lift structures and lift towers, does anybody have in mind any of the town's ordinances that really would have a substantive effect on a project like that? With the exception of waterway setbacks?
Slope. It's kind of interesting. We don't really address lift towers very well in our ordinance. But just by nature, the F cause does, the county does, the Forest Service has, has different regulations, but you know, by nature of a ski area, you're going to, you're going to put these lift towers and slopes over 30% because that's where people ski often. And we have, you can't build on anything over 30% slope in our ordinance. Now you can get a variance as you would, because it makes sense. But other than slope, nothing besides waterway setback.
And, and you wouldn't see slope as being any kind of a significant hurdle to that kind of installation, John?
Probably not. Because, I mean, looking at, what I've looked at with the county and other areas, but they say that, just by, they said, that wasn't my wording, it's too good. They say by the very nature of a ski area, you're going to be putting these lift towers in slopes, on steep slopes. So they almost automatically support a variance. And I know those Veas and Towers and some of these other things are on practically cliff walls.
Yeah.
Some of the Gaz X's down below, but.
Yeah, like the one in Hell Gate is pretty steep up there.
Yeah.
Well, so we've scheduled this section of our meeting until 3:30 and we've only got a few minutes before that. I, I think that we should, we have a couple of guests who can speak to some of these issues for us and that's both, I think that's why Laura Briefer is here and Mike Mon wanted to be part of this conversation. So why don't we bring them into the conversation for the last few minutes? They've, I presume, have been listening to what we've been talking about and I'm sure they have some comments. Mike, do you?
Yes, I just wanted to you know, clarify. So as we look at our master plan for the future, that's been to be able to deal with avalanche control work and snowmaking and such. You know, in our master plan, we have Veas and Towers on Forest Service land scheduled and Veas and Towers on private land scheduled. We have, you know, our hope is to put snowmaking into supreme, which would cross some of our private lots and be on Forest Service land, which would be utility lines, potentially some snowmaking towers with a gun on or not. And we certainly can avoid those lots with any structures. That's not an issue. That's there. Our, our whole goal in this is, you know, the, we have quite an extensive process we go through with the Forest Service for approval of major projects. But the things like a gate, a signpost and rail, you know, snowmaking fence, a, things that are, would be defined as structures really follow under the, under the maintenance and our, our winter and summer operating plans.
Yeah.
We're not required to go through a, a process with the Forest Service to, to deal with those or have those setbacks. And we, and also in our, things we do with the Forest Service, we, we comply with the, the Salt Lake City Public Utilities setbacks and such that are there. So we're, you know, our intent in trying to have an exemption was just that for the, the private lands that are interspersed in the ski area, that they could be treated kind of the same on those, all of those little minor issues which we're trying to exempt out. We're more than willing that on a, a project that would cross private and federal land, that the same requirements applied to both, that we're willing to do the same level of work. And, you know, analysis that's required for the Forest Service for our private land and submit that to the town of Alta for their review and approval. That's, that's not the, our point here is we're, we're willing to do that. We think that's even appropriate and the town should be involved in that process. We were just trying to deal with, you know, not, you know, not trying to have all of those little other little teeny things that are just, you know, trying to have a, the right place to put, for example, a, a run sign that says, go this way, maybe within 50 feet of a waterway, but it's, it's minimal setback and what there's, we're not really required to have those type of things be set back from those because they, they don't damage that. To that, you know, you don't have that same impact from a, as you would from a structure type building. So that, that's what we've been able to try and do accomplish. In regards to F causes, discussions I've had with Snowbird is their indication is, is that they don't, you know, they're able to do their lifts and their snowmaking work and all those type of things. And that the county comes and does inspections, but they really aren't doing anything on the approval process. A lot of that comes through the, when it comes to lifts, it comes through the state. And I don't know what they do for snowmaking lines though, on that, and ask that question. And then, you know, the other question I would say is so currently under current ordinance, then you know, Evan Johnson put up his fence posts, are those structures?
And this is why this takes so long. Yeah, those things were dangerous. And when they're five feet tall, they're steel triposts. And when there's four and a half feet of snow, if you fall on it, they could puncture you and kill you. So our previous attorney, who is now a judge, said, no, those are not structures yet. They're just pounded into the ground. Now, if he starts to wrap wire or, or chicken wire, barbed wire or fencing material, then he's constructing something on the ground. And then we can react. Cause I was petrified that somebody was going to get hurt up there, but we couldn't, you know.
That's why we went.
We were advised by our attorney that we couldn't go up there and tear them up.
All right. So, so, all right, let, let's see if Laura wants to give us her opinion about this conversation.
Hi, everyone. So good to see you all. And I don't think I have too much to add to this conversation. I think you've been discussing a lot of things on my mind, sort of weighing the benefits and the, the, you know, all of the, all of the balancing tests you have to weigh for this. You know, our underlying concern is going to be, can we adequately, adequately protect wetlands and waterways? And, and those are actually kind of found in two different parts of Regulation 14 on the, in the county health department code. So, you know, one thing I would prefer is to not have real or perceived conflicts between Regulation 14 and Salt Lake City's Chapter 17 and the, the overlay zone. We have a long track record of working with the town of Alta and with Alta Ski Lifts and Friends of Alta and others. I will mention that, that we are also a land I will mention that that we are also a landowner in in the Albion Basin. Um so we have a a significant stake. We've invested time and money and other resources into making sure that those lands are protected and the wetlands are protected. And so we would, we would love to make sure that the the ordinance in place has an eye towards that.
I think that protecting the watershed and was really the impetus behind this whole effort. Uh at least.
That's right.
All the invasion goes.
Yeah, yeah. And I I really, really appreciate what the Town of Alta has done with this and and all of the great work thinking through um all of the ins and outs of an ordinance. Creating ordinances are really difficult and complex sometimes.
This one seems to be worse with all the small offshoots of what's possible with related to building. But, you know, again, we wouldn't do anything to encounter to your ordinances. I mean, the fifty feet is still sacred. But after we talked to Professor Elleringer, uh you know, the Albion Basin is special. It is different. It is a little bit. It is more susceptible to the damage. So we were looking at increasing from fifty to one hundred. But then keeping the same exemptions that um the the ski area has always kind of benefited from through Public Utilities, Health Department and the Forest Service. And like writing that down into our ordinance so far has not been that easy. So we will get it, but.
So um I I think, um, you know, in a conversation I had with uh Polly and Laura yesterday, um the issue of what is subject to the requirement of having a building permit um came up. Or rather, I'm sorry, not a building permit. What what Polly, um correct me on this, but I think it's what is subject to the building code? Is that the right way to put it?
Correct. Well, it's a building permit and I know John explored that with our building official.
Right.
And it it's it's very interesting. He said a lot of it comes down to I mean, the small things. I mean, you uh everybody knows you need a building permit for a house. But here's what the uh two thousand eighteen IBC International Building Code defines a structure as. That is that which is built or constructed. Anything built or constructed needs a building permit. But he said, you know, nobody's gonna most jurisdictions are not going to require anyone to get a building permit for a gate or a sign. A lot of places do require building permits for fences. We don't have a fencing ordinance as yet. But you know, the building code doesn't really help us. That which is built or constructed. If it's built or constructed, it needs a permit, but it varies.
Issue for us. It's not going to be a demarcator.
We have an excavation permit requirement?
Yes, we do.
And is there a limit on what you're excavating for? Like if you're digging a one foot hole, no big deal, but if you're digging.
There is, there are um exemptions in the excavation permit. I haven't looked at that for a little while. It it's related to your, like, if you're doing maintenance on your garden or your property or and if it's small, you don't need an excavation permit. Um, the Health Department uh also has regulations for excavation. You can't dig a hole in the Town of Alta without approval from the Health Department. And it's an interesting uh example. I got a number of calls when a guy in Provenia Estates put in a sign. And people read the ordinances and it's pretty amazing. So they said, hey, this guy can't, does this guy have Valley Health Department approval to dig a hole? It's like, geez. I called and I talked to them and they said, well, theoretically, you would have to get a permit from the Health Department to dig a hole to put a to put a fence in. But they said, we're not going to enforce that level of the no digging without a permit.
Okay, so so it's now three thirty five and we have a couple more things to do in this work session. Um so I'm gonna suggest that we pivot away from this issue, but when it comes up on number eleven on our town council meeting agenda, I'm guessing that we should postpone this one another month. Is that so that we can try and figure out what the right way to demarcate, what is exempt and what isn't?
Well, I have, I mean, I don't, John, you saw some. Why don't we move forward? We can decide that during the main meeting, right?
Yes, we we can decide that. I just sometimes it's if you can put things out of the out of the way, but okay, we can, we can leave that discussion for later. Thank you, Laura, for weighing in. Um I guess the nice thing about you have to drive to Alta, but the bad thing about Zoom is you didn't get to drive to Alta and go skiing, so.
That's right. And I miss all of you guys. It's great to see so many friends again. Bye bye.
Okay.
Bye bye. And likewise, Laura.
Alright. Five minutes late, we're gonna move to uh Margaret. You you have the floor. Um you had something, you've been working on a project and I think you you have something in mind that you want to do, so.
Thank you. Um what I'd like to do is introduce one of the uh associate members of the committee or team that I've been working on and that's Associate Professor of Signet Finance at Westminster College, uh Richard Haskell. Rick is uh has um also a teaching appointment with the University of Utah Department of Economics. He's also an active uh consultant with Goldman Sachs Ten Thousand Small Business Program and was recognized in February of this year as one of five uh outstanding U of U alum. Um I have a short bio for him and a longer CV if anyone is interested in it and I'd be happy to provide it. So part of what um the team that I was uh working on was that we associated with Westminster to try to help us consider in the town's twenty thirteen business licensing um effort and whether or not we wanted to also look at disproportionate services and enhance costs. I had hoped and anticipated that by this meeting, we would have sufficient information that we would be able to present or that Westminster would present um a timeframe for such a study and address the scope of that as well as the cost. Unfortunately, in the last few weeks, we've had three people associated with this group um experience deaths in their families. So we are not as far along as we had hoped. Um and we hope that that pattern does not continue going forward. So um what Rick has been helping um me and the other to do is look at the study that Zion's Bank uh Public Finance did and some of the other uh information from twenty thirteen and try and figure out where we are, where we potentially could go in the future. And so I wanted to introduce you to him, uh introduce him to you today and to uh give you an opportunity to talk with him about this endeavor. It sounded like from our last meeting that at least some of the staff, if not uh council members, felt that maybe it was time to uh readdress the business licensing idea and whether or not we were keeping um current with what we wanted to do, whether or not he actually proposes, if we go forward, what the measure is, but at least identifies what the costs are for us so that we can make policy determinations. So, Rick, did you wanna say anything specifically to the group or do you wanna just field questions?
Well, let me say just a just a bit, Margaret, and thank you for that introduction. And by the way, those of you that might want my CV, we probably need to question why you have so much free time on your hands. Uh because there's there's no reason anybody but my blessed mother would be interested in reading it. So uh Margaret and Roger and I and Ern Budvarson, the Dean of the Gore School of Business and Shari Far, one of our county professors, have spent quite a bit of time talking about this issue together. I've gone through and poured through all of the information that you have from the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Zion's Bank study. I've also looked at similar issues uh that we have information on for for Park City, for Brighton, for a number of other uh small recreation based municipalities, Bryant Head, et cetera. And it appears to me that there are a couple of issues at hand that I that I'd like to get some feedback on as we then kind of open a dialogue that may result in you asking us to do a study for you. And it may not. It may simply be something that you're just not that interested in. As as I understand the situation at hand, following that Zion's Bank study, uh a new fee schedule was put in place, but then some years following that, you transitioned your uh service level from being a contract city with the UFA to being a part of their service uh uh zone, if you will. Uh UFSA, I believe, is the acronym now. And as the contract city, you found that you were experiencing increased costs, but didn't necessarily continue to increase the fee schedule to your varying users to go along with that, such that the the town went ahead and bore a disproportionate uh burden and a deficit, if you will, as a function of that. Uh when you moved into UFSA, it shifted the responsibility uh of the accounting and of the paying for all this from the town's budget, both for revenues and expenses, and then moved it simply to the the property tax structures. And so now it's the property owners that that are paying for this as part of how UFSA apportioned costs uh to your area. Which, uh if I understand it correctly, has not necessarily been altogether popular with all of the property owners. So it's moved it from every one of the stakeholders to just some of the stakeholders. And it would appear as though it might make sense to revisit and improve even the detail on that Zion's Bank study that was done some time ago. So redo that same type of study, but maybe with some greater detail on some of the marshal service uh activities, costs and revenues, as well as everything that was in that original study construction. But then also to determine if you took that information and then it chose to go back to being a contract town with UFA, would you improve the the distribution or allocation of costs amongst the appropriate stakeholders? And would there be a more fair sharing of burden uh from property owners, businesses, et cetera? Uh and and so that's that's the that's the beginning of this and you maybe understood all of that already. I, if you did, I just wanted to help you understand that that's what I understand and that's what we at Westminster understand. There seems to be a larger issue, though. Uh I'm one of those people that comes up that canyon and conceivably on any given Saturday or Friday could create some of the problems. Unfortunately, I've not had to use any emergency services as I'm up that canyon. But I'm in Albion Basin and Catherine Pass and and that area rather a lot. And and I don't live there. I don't pay taxes there. I rarely uh if ever buy anything there. I drive up. I live in Sandy. I drive up. I enjoy the the beauty of the area. I brought food with me. I spend my day, my hours, what have you. I drive back. But if I fall, now we have a shared problem. And it's not necessarily obvious who is uh funding uh me having that problem as I've come up to use your beautiful canyon. And so so this is largely an issue of the population increase in the valley and the desire to get out of that heavy population up into beautiful areas, but without having a mechanism that directly charges us and puts the burden at the moment largely on the uh the property owners and could place it again on property owners and uh and businesses. And maybe beyond that, if the right instruments were used.
Let me call your attention to something that um doesn't sound like you're aware of, which is the um there's a three point one million dollar transfer from the County General Fund to the UFA. Um and it's called the um Recreation Area Contribution to the Emergency Services. We were told, uh part we, once upon a time, we got a share of that to our account, which was what was keeping our contract rate low. And um the county decided that um it's a quite a complicated legal story and a political story, but the county decided no longer to allow that account, that money to be um accounted against our um fees to the UFA. That was the catalyst, that change is the catalyst that um really ended up with us in the UFSA. You're a little ahead of the story. None of this cost has already been born. It doesn't get born until the beginning of the year. But um the uh the the Recreation Area Contribution is made on the argument that people like you are imposing costs on the UFSA and no longer is there a UFA contracting municipality in the canyons, but there was. So so the UFSA is going to collect that money or the UFA, which benefits all of the members of the UFSA, including us. So there is a mechanism in place for a transfer from your pocket to helping pay for the emergency services that you enjoy when you um go skiing.
Well, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I wasn't aware of that.
But isn't it true?
But but I'll also admit that there that.
Hang on a second, Margaret, right, Rick?
I I was saying, thank you. You're right. I wasn't aware of that. Uh but we've not gone so deeply into this yet for me to be aware of everything. And so there's a lot that I'm not aware of.
Right. I just wanted you to know about that, you know.
It's very helpful. And 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 Mayor Sondak, so you indicated that that mechanism exists that that does apportion some of the cost to me, but it wasn't immediately obvious how that's happening. Is that because as a county resident, I'm paying into the coffers and some of that three point one million has come from me? Is that is that the inference?
That's right. Yeah, because it's coming out of the County General Fund.
And so that three point one million still comes to the town and it is or is not off helping offset the UFSA expense.
Um it goes to the UFA and it lowers the uh member fees that UFSA members would pay. So we're not the only beneficiaries of it.
Got it. That's that's very helpful. Adds another question to this. And the question is, is three point one million dollars sufficient?
No, uh no, the the answer to that is it's not. And but that is what the county is um willing to the actual costs according to the UFA would be about three point four million. And so that extra three hundred thousand is borne by the UFA members. So so we have a downward coefficient based on the 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 county transfer, but there because of its inadequacy, in some sense, there's an upward coefficient as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Margaret?
Uh I was just gonna say um here is that the situation was with Brighton was still getting that money separately because of the UFSA, but we in Alta were specifically excluded from the recreation area in the legislation that provided that contribution. So it may be that I completely misunderstood what the process was in the past, but that Alta was excluded, but Brighton was not because at the time that that occurred, it was not a municipality. It was still part of the county.
Well, it's complicated, but Brighton has been part of the UFSA and has paid the same rate that we will be paying next month. And um uh that has not changed with their incorporation. And they do benefit from that transfer as a member of UFSA like we will, but also they gave up as I can't remember exactly the detail right this second because I'd have to review it. But they also don't have zoning control because they agreed to be part of uh Polly, what's it called?
Mountainous Planning District.
The Mountainous Planning District. Thank you. And so we we have not agreed to give up our control over our zoning. And so there was a And so there was a bit of a and and Rick, you may want to know this too, is that there's a benefit in some sense going back to the county from Brighton that is not going back to the county from Alta. Now, how you how you value that would be a complicated question. You know, but it looks like the county is willing to pay something in exchange for the zoning control.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess happy to talk to you directly if that would be helpful.
It may well, Mayor. Thank you. So I guess at this point, I was hoping perhaps to just engage in a conversation to get a better sense of some of your interests here and what you as a council might like to see done.
Thank you, Professor Haskell. Could you describe how this funding works in places like Brianhead, like Park City?
Thank you. And I would like to be able to describe that in detail to you, but I'm not yet able to do so. I have gone through some of the material and I will tell you that what it has done for me as much as anything else is motivated a list of about 37 questions. And so I'm not yet able. Even though we spent more than a few hours into this, that is still scratching the surface of this. But I would be happy to try to answer that. I'm just not prepared to do so today.
Thank you.
So I've heard from Margaret and Roger, of course, some of their thoughts. What are some of your thoughts with respect to the current UFA, UFSA, Marshal Services? Money's available, money's not available. Do you feel as though you're in an optimal situation at this point such that there is no need to dig deeper into this? Or are you interested in a deeper dive to determine whether or not you're in an optimal situation?
I think we can say that we're not in an optimal situation. You know, what one thing that I'm looking forward to learning about because it sounds to me as though you're going to be able to make a fairly sophisticated and subtle type of economic analysis. And so it's not going to be the simplistic type of analysis of some of the things that we may have seen in the past. But it seems to me as though you'll get into some fairly interesting nuanced economic questions such as we may ask, what is the value of specific set of utilization of services? And then how do we compare that with the much more intangible value of protection that may never be used for fire or emergency services and yet has a very real value by the fact that it's there in the unlikely event that it ever would be used?
Yeah. So so there's a there's a notion of that's what we're doing is paying for insurance in that. You know, is really what that amounts to. A couple of thoughts that you might want to consider as you move forward in this is that most of the emergency transport, transport costs, although that was being used to allocate costs in the UFA, they allocate costs across member entity boundaries based on usage patterns and of calls. And that's probably not the best model for the UFA to use in some sense. I think it's relatively straightforward. And this doesn't happen very often that they have their cross border allocation. So for them to redo this is probably too big of a lift. We're not going to get them to do that would be my expectation. But in fact, the the costs of emergency transporter are largely borne by the insurance companies of the patients who are transported. So there's a large portion of reimbursement that comes back. So it's not a real cost to the UFA. So that's one thing to consider. Another thing to consider is if we're going down a path of reconsidering essentially all of our public finance structure. I would be really interested in questions about infrastructure depreciation and charges for that. Because I think we are way behind where we need to be in terms of the lifetime of our water and sewer system and and saving money to be able to upgrade and replace it. So that's a big question in my mind. And you should, you know, I would think that that's got to be part of the town's liabilities as much as the operational expenses for the police department, for example.
Any other questions or comments from other members of the council?
I'm just looking forward to your what you will come back with. I think like Cliff was saying, you know, it's going to be nice to have a very, a much deeper study done. And I think the town needs it. We don't have a lot of revenue sources necessarily, or we're very dependent on sales tax and we're very dependent on things that maybe other towns don't rely on as much. So it'll be nice to see. And like Hera said, I think it's not just our town services that are expensive. It's our building depreciation, our utilities. There's just a bunch of things that we have as cost to us that it'll be nice to see a study done and see a little deeper analysis on whether we can get money from other businesses or I don't know, do do more of a fee structure that's different than what we have now.
Yeah, I mean, or as Elise just intimated, our revenue stream is very volatile and our our expense or our outflow is much less volatile. It's and and so that's can create issues for us perhaps this year. We'll see. So we end up budgeting quite conservatively as as a way to hedge. That's our hedging strategy, basically. Okay. So it's now two minutes of you would have been interested, I think, in the next thing that I was going to talk about, which is the social choice problem of ranked ranked choice voting and voting procedures. I don't know if you if if public finance is your is your wheelhouse, then maybe game theory isn't. I don't know. But I was going to get into some of that. But I think that you know, we're we're about out of time. And I actually prepared a four slide PowerPoint slide on this. And I'll just, we won't go through it. I'm going to just show you the title because a business school colleague will appreciate it, and so will some of the audience. So here is the here is the slide. And I'm not really going to go into it because it turns out that this would take all the 15 minutes that I expected that we scheduled me to have. I will say in the last minute that after doing my dissertation was about social choice theory as a behavioral economics problem, basically. And it's been a long time since I've thought about it. But I did some work on this. I spent a few hours going into the literature and there was some recent conversation between a faculty member at NYU, who you may know, Rick, Stephen Brams. And who's a game theorist who studies political structures and voting structures. And some other people recently in the Wall Street Journal back in November in the op ed pages. I am not persuaded yet that ranked choice voting is the way to go. And so I think we need to have a fairly extensive conversation about this that we are not going to have today. Okay, is that okay if we just skip it and I can put it on for a future work session? Okay. All right. You guys want to take a couple minute break and then come back, you know, council meeting? Thank you. Professor Haskell.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Okay, so let's let's take a two minute break and then we'll get started on Hey, Mike Maury, can you hear me while we're waiting for everybody to join the meeting?
Yes.
Heraglider accident at Maybird on November 2?
Yes.
Wow, is everybody okay?
Yeah. That one, we had another one up here in Alta on Saturday. I crashed pretty hard into the lower part of the Hellgate.
Did you? Did you hear him, Cliff?
No, but I don't want to slow us down. I'll catch you later, Mike. Just here. Sounds like everybody's okay.
Somebody crashed around Hellgate and walked walked away from it, but was lucky, apparently. All right, let's see. Wait for Margaret. There's Elise. And there's Margaret. Hi. Okay, so I'll call the town council, the Alta Town Council meeting to order. It's the meeting of Wednesday, December 9, 2020. We're good to go, Jen Piper, in terms of recording that just kept going. Okay. All right. The first item on the agenda besides calling the meeting to order is the declaration that we will have an electronic meeting without an anchor location, but I read that at the beginning of our work session an hour ago. So we will just move on to the second item on the agenda, which is citizen input. Jen, you probably have some but some folks who have something to say?
I do. I know that Kyle Maynard for the Friends of Alta would like to speak, so I'm gonna allow him first. And then if anybody else from the attendee panel would like to speak, will you guys kindly raise your hands if you know how to use that feature there so that I know to prompt you? Kyle, you should be good to go.
Evening. So I just want to comment on the ordinance changes and the work session, mostly just to say thank you to the town council and staff for all the work and hours you put into this. I know it's been a long process and I also want to thank Mike and the Alta ski area for their willingness to talk to us about alternative language. Ultimately, I think that that John and Polly have found got us closer to the solution and we're almost there. And I think that we're asking all the right questions and addressing what I think is is our number one concern of the limitations and constrictions of this as ordinance. So it just helps maintain the status quo on the ski area. Which I think is is what everyone wants. So I just want to again say thank you.
Kyle, let me say thank you to you because it was in a conversation with you that I became aware that we needed to think harder about this issue of private ground. So I appreciated your calling that to our attention. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I'm not seeing anybody else raise their hand. I might just ask, Thedy, do you, did you want to make a comment? I've given you permission to talk. I just wanted to double check with you.
I just would ask if there are any questions that anyone has about the commercial pays program?
Well, we don't have an action on that question on our agenda today, do we? Or do we?
No, I think you were going to just do a mayor's report on it.
Yeah. So I mean, maybe, well, let me let me just say what I was gonna say and and Thedy, if I may, I'm calling you that since we haven't met. I'll I'll just see if you want to jump into this. This is the what I was going to say from my mayor's report that comes later. One of our businesses, at the request of one of our businesses, the staff and I have been looking into this CPACE program, which, as I understand it, is a public-private partnership to provide or to facilitate for financing for energy efficient retrofits in Utah. In this case, it would be an energy efficient retrofit. And that the rate of the financing is low, apparently. And it requires the town to enter into a professional services agreement that opens up this process and is this first step in moving forward. The benefit to this would go to one of our businesses. The there is a indemnification to the of the town, so there isn't a direct risk to us. One thing you can answer, Thedy, that I thought, I don't recall, Polly, if you and I ever closed the loop on this question. But it does look like the reason for the town's involvement, or maybe you can address the reason for the town's involvement at all, instead of it just going to be a financing deal with the private entity. But my, what it looks like to me is that we subordinate our position in any kind of recovery of, for example, tax revenues in case of a bank, a bankruptcy or a default.
Correct. So and maybe and Thedy is much more versed with the program than I am. But based on my research, it, the program allows for municipalities to basically turn over their assessment power and allow for a bank to loan money to a property owner in exchange for pretty much getting the first place in the lien. It's it's the same as a tax lien. So I guess because they have that assurance that gives them more likelihood to give better rates and the program is limited to sustainable practices and seismic upgrades.
Right. If you If I could add one comment, and that would be that this, based on my discussions with early on with the Assistant AG, this is like a special assessment, so it does not go above a tax assessment. It's like a water It's like a water or sewer assessment that the owner requests, you know, uh, be put on their property, and then it's pretty much contemporaneously assigned to a third-party lender. Um, and you are correct, that the, uh, town is indemnified against any future action, and the third-party lender assumes all responsibility for collection if there is any enforcement, but it doesn't at all run through the tax rolls, it, so there's not that burden of, of time or effort uh, placed on the assessment office or the town regarding that.
So this, the assessment done for this purpose is completely independent from the Salt Lake County assessor's assessment?
Yes, yes.
Property tax.
Yeah, it's, it's, it doesn't have, that, that is a very common, uh, kind of misconception, and in, and actually in some states, it is related, but not in Utah. It's a completely separate, um, um, operation or process.
Right. Now, the, the, the business in question is impatient to get this done because, um, I guess I don't know what the magnitude of their, essentially, I think this is a refinancing.
It, it's specifically related to, uh, both energy efficiency and seismic upgrades that they completed, which are quite expensive, and, um, as I've told Polly, I'm just in receipt of their, uh, or we are their technical package, and our engineers are looking at that because we do a pretty, uh, intense technical review to make sure that the project meets statutory requirements, and as soon as I have that, then, you know, um, we can share that, but.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, can, can you explain your, um, what is your position? Who do you, for whom do you work and what's your title?
Sure. Um, I work directly for Sustainable Real Estate Solutions. We are the third-party administrator for the program and, um, uh, have been in this role for about two, two and a half years now, and what we do is carry on all the day-to-day business of the program. Work directly with cities or counties and, or towns, uh, to help them through the process, and also we are responsible for validating the eligibility that these projects actually do meet, you know, the statutory requirements.
Are you responsible for Utah or for various?
Yeah, Utah. Every state is a little bit different. The, those, you know, that have pays programs all have some unique aspects to them, and, um, Utah does as well. Like I mentioned, it's not in any way related to a tax assessment or et cetera, and, um, the whole pro, you know, uh, goal in Utah is to incentivize higher performing, more energy efficient buildings, ones that conserve, you know, energy and water, and, um, also it, the program does include renewable solar, and there are programs for both new and existing buildings.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's a worthy undertaking for sure, it seems to me, and, uh, if we can figure, if we can get this all tied off correctly, uh, it seems like a good idea, but I.
You have a very, I will say you have a very astute attorney. She is doing, uh, I, exceptional due diligence, and you should be very, uh, pleased with that.
Well, thanks for that endorsement.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, you know, one of the reasons it's attractive, uh, is because what, the whole goal, again, of, of, of creating the third-party administrator position was to, um, assist the state or the individual cities or towns from being then put in a position where any bias may be shown or any preference may be shown, because everything is done, you know, as a third-party independent, um, entity, so, um, uh, there, uh, this, that's the one reason the state initially, uh, created this, uh, relationship, and now we have, um, more so than with the Office of Energy Development, we have individual relationship with cities, towns, and counties to carry, you know, this program through.
Okay. And I'll say to the town council members, um, that the exposure on a, so, being subordinated on tax, recovering tax, unpaid taxes, is actually not that big of an exposure. John, remind me, we looked at what they pay in property tax to the town, or Polly, you may know, it was some ten, tens of thousands of dollars, but not.
And I was gonna put language in the agreement that we would be indemnified for that amount as well.
Oh, okay.
And just to be clear, the intent is not for you to subordinate your tax position.
Oh, okay, I miss.
Well, except that the, the lien does have, it's a first right lien. It's the same as a tax lien, so that's why I thought it was best to indemnify ourselves.
Absolutely. And the third-party signs something, some lender signs that, uh, an indemnification as well, but Polly, no, you're exactly right.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, that, that was, uh, news to me, Polly. I'm glad to, I'm glad that you have a solution to that aspect of it, even though it wasn't that big, so good. Okay, thank you. Jen, is there anybody else, or is there, or Piper, is there a, so, I didn't see anything submitted in writing this time?
We do have one more, um, Vincent Reynolds. Um, I just gave you permission to talk.
Hello?
Hello?
We can hear you. Um, you have two minutes to address the council, please. Thank you.
This is actually Dan Cutler using Vincent Reynolds', uh, cellphone, so thank you. Uh, I just, I just wanted to talk to you all about the Alta Resort Shuttle and the town's participation in it this year. Uh, Harris, uh, we talked before about, uh, may, maybe you guys not having to join in this year. Would you, would that be all right with you if you did not?
So let me, let me give a slight amount of background here. The, the issue, um, came up because I was trying to figure out, how much risk, uh, the riders would bear if they were on the shuttle. I think the answer to that, although I haven't reviewed this particular finding from MIT, and, but Dan, you may, you, I know that Tom has received this report now, and I just haven't looked at the Alta Shuttle, uh, part of it, but I think they sent it on Monday.
There is a, there's another, uh, uh, thing, another point that I'd like to talk to you about, Bill, is what, and I think we talked about it also, with the town contributing, it sort of makes it a public service.
No, I was gonna get to that, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the, so the background was, I was wondering about whether we should, uh, whether it should run, but it's not our entity, so it wasn't really up to the town to say you can't run it. It's not a town service. But the town does help pay for it, and so I floated the idea in a conversation, um, with Dan and Tom about, well, maybe we shouldn't pay for it, and that would be the way we proceeded. It was just a, a, a concept. In the meanwhile, um, Tom obtained a, uh, a grant from the state so that the total cost of all of the subscribers is lower in any case. So we're not talking about that much money, and I was ready to forget about the problem and just focus on the safety because Dan and Tom had come up with some procedures that seemed reasonable. Um, whether they need to be as draconian as originally proposed is what I think the MIT study will be able to address, Dan, but in the meanwhile, in a conversation with Dan, uh, what Dan wants to do is limit the ridership to have it be essentially, and feel free to, uh, correct me, Dan, on, on these details, is, um, to have it be a, a call service, basically, um, with single family ridership, and the issue there, of course, is that on powder days when the keyhole is open, um, this, this shuttle gets packed full of, um, people who ski the, the keyhole and come back. And it occurred to Dan and me in the conversation that if the town didn't contribute, then if the town does contribute, really, it's a public service. And, um, and Chris is right, it's faster to walk, and the people who are skiing the keyhole are usually pretty capable of walking back too. And so it occurred to Dan that maybe he prefers for us not subscribe this year so that it isn't a public service, and I had a conversation with Polly about if we did, then it would be, and, um, I presume, Polly, if we don't, it isn't, and then the subscriber, then the, the services for the people who pay for it.
Correct, right.
So, um, it is in our budget. Um, so there is a question for the town council of, would you rather not spend this money and have this not be a public service?
Another thing to consider there is that, um, it's partially funded by that, um, quarter, fourth quarter percent transportation distribution, so, um, we would have to find another qualifying.
Right.
Uh, expense for that.
The amount this year, our contribution is normally $6,000, but with the grant from the state, our amount would go down to, I think by 40%, right? Uh, Dan, it would go down to six, either to, to 40% or to 60% of that amount. I can't remember.
It, it was under $3,000. It was under 50%.
Okay, so, yeah, so we would have a 40, I think it's a $2,400 bill, so we would have to find someplace for that. The effect of this decision is that last $2,400. So.
I want to comment that if you're Chris Colley, it's faster to walk, but that might not be true for everyone in town.
Would you like me to comment?
Please.
Well, the, the thinking is that if, if we have, uh, patrons ri- riding that shuttle uh, back over and the, the shuttle has to pick up people that aren't associated with that, the, those patrons' family, that it's gonna just throw the whole intent of, uh, you know, the distancing and everything uh, out the window, uh, but, and I talked to Tom today, and I talked to Mike Mon also, and, and we said, you know, if, if there's nobody on the shuttle, if it's in the afternoon, nobody's on the shuttle, and the driver can pick up some people at that stop, th- then, then that'll be fine, but if, if there's some people in the shuttle already, they might not want to have that exposure, and.
And you, you might want to think about, you know, people skiing the keyhole and walking down and standing outside is a different dynamic than them getting into an enclosed space together, even, even if there is no family already on the shuttle, you may want to think about how many people you put on the shuttle.
That, that's what I thought too.
Related to each other.
Mike Mon, Mike Mon said he would allow me to put a sign up at the top of the keyhole, at the top of, you know, where you walk up from the Wildcat Lift, that, that said that due to COVID, uh, this year, we're not going to be giving skiers a ride back from the, uh, bypass road back lifts. If, if you want to ski this, be prepared to walk or wait for the UTA bus, but the Alta Resort Shuttle won't be servicing uh, those skiers this year. I mean, we've always been happy in the past to pick up skiers along with everybody else and bring them over, a- as well as, uh, hopefully we can do that in the future, but uh, just because of some of the constraints of, uh, this year, we're hoping to, uh, limit it.
I meant to, uh, review those findings, um, about the space and, and the, and the risk, um, when I got it on Monday, but, um, I've just, I didn't have that opportunity, and, and so I'm a little unprepared to weigh in on whether or not I think it's a too risky to, to, to allow people on, on the shuttle. I don't know the answer to that at the moment. But I do think that, given the standard idea of distancing and the approach of, of limiting, uh, interaction to the people you live with, that I, I think that what Dan and Tom have in mind makes a lot of sense. And I'm happy to save the money, and one of the new business items I had for the town council this time was, um, we're gonna, we're gonna bring a proposed budget amendment to the council for the next town council meeting, since we'll be halfway through the year, and, right, we're, so it's not like the money's just gonna be floating. We'll, we'll give you an idea of what, we'll, as a council, decide what to do about it.
Dan, just a quick question. Do the windows normally open on that little shuttle bus? I can't recall.
The windows do open, and we, we plan on, on doing that, uh, you know, whenever possible, uh, I mean, if you have, if you have four people and they're a family of four, and they're a, they're a family unit, then we might not have to open them, but if, you know, if we do have two families in there, and I think that's gonna be at the driver's discretion to, uh, uh, to do that, of course, if it's going sideways and you, you, you might not be able to open them, but in most cases, I think they should be open. Sheridan, I think that's important. They, and they do open.
We can do the, uh, once we, once we start working on this, uh, Dan, we can do the sensitivity analysis on open or closed windows and see what difference it makes. I don't know that you're gonna get an answer right this second.
Yeah, and that's not important. Just wanted to, it, it, it's a great opportunity to get you guys all thinking about it, and I, I think you know uh, my concerns, and, uh, I'll just wait to hear back from you.
Okay, thank you. And the, the, uh, first operating day that's planned is next weekend, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the 18th is, uh, the, uh, first operating day, and, uh, I'm not too optimistic about, uh, keyhole, uh, participants at that point.
Right, okay, um, we'll, we will be in touch.
All right, thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move to the third item on the agenda, which is, uh, the ski area update. We are now 10 minutes behind schedule, but, um, or 15 minutes behind schedule, but I think those were worthwhile things to be briefed about. Mike?
Good to see you again. Hello there. I'll try to be quick for you. Well, scary opened on November 23rd. We've had four days since we opened where our parking was filled, but never got to the point where we had to really turn anybody around and send them down canyon. You know, the, it was happened, generally what we did is we put the message out there, parking was full. Um, it seemed to help taper off the flow of traffic, and there was always just enough coming and going and enough spaces in town that we didn't really need to shut down. Um, that was about the amount of people, didn't really want any more people then, that, given the current conditions and the limited terrain that's open. And the surprise for us has been that despite having 3,000 people here four times, different times, we have yet to have filled a restaurant. The people just aren't choosing to, to go indoors to eat. Most of them are not eating indoors. Now, they're eating out on decks, or they're bringing their own food, or they're not staying for very long. So we'll, you know, the, the big test is gonna be the first powder day we have, I believe, or if we don't have one of those before Christmas holidays, that's gonna be the next test, but we're continuing to kind of monitor and evaluate that. We'll see where that goes. We've had no COVID outbreaks within the employee workforce within the workplace. We have had employees that have, uh, been tested positive, and all of those contacts have generally come from outside of the workplace and in the valley. What we've seen there. We had a Ski Utah meeting today, um, they'd done a study through Love, uh, a marketing study, reached out to a lot of skiers. Uh, they say sentiment right now across the country from many people that come to Utah, um, about 50% of them indicate they do not plan to travel to Utah this year, um, for skiing. We are also seeing a little bit of a flurry of, you know, we have a no questions asked guarantee on season pass purchases, for people about a pass, and we're probably refunding 10 to 15 season passes per day right now, people that have now decided that, you know, given the conditions and, and where we are with COVID in the country, that they probably aren't going to come skiing.
Mike, that runs through the end of December?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yeah. We, uh, I, I sent each of you, I'd indicated in a previous, uh, uh, report that, uh, there were questions about the Supreme and the wetland mitigation, that project, we'd, we'd kind of got our. report that there were questions about the Supreme and the wetland mitigation, that project, we'd kind of got our to our three year mark when we said we would summarize and report, sent a summary report to each of you that kind of summarized the processes, some of the complications and issues that were there. You know, it was a there was a fair amount of misunderstanding and new people involved between the forest. And it was my transition between me and Otto in there and that kind of got a few people, got some side, few people sideways in that process, but we have done the best to make, clean all that up and make that thing right. And we're proud of that project. What if, did any of you have questions about this Supreme Wetland mitigation and impact there that I can answer for you? If you do, please don't hesitate to reach out. Be glad to answer any of those you may have at another time. Other than that, it's all of the I made that quick, I think. Any, any other questions you have for this year?
What's the forecast?
Forecast is, you know, it looks like we're going to do a pattern change. Not a lot of snow here coming up this weekend, but there'll be a little bit. But the pattern is looking to be fairly unsettled for the next few weeks. So we're, we're thinking that by we're, we're hoping by the end of next weekend, maybe there will be enough snowfall that we could bring Supreme online. But it's really, it's some mother nature dependent, you know, for that. It's, it's getting really firm. And those of you who've been out skiing by one o'clock in the afternoon, most of the grooming has been scraped off and there's some pretty slick spots. So if you're out late in the day, please, please ski with caution. And I would tell you that generally, most people are very compliant with wearing face coverages. When we, we see someone and they don't have one on and we ask them to cover their face, they generally do. We did have, we did have an incident today where a person fired off and called some inappropriate names to some of our lift attendants that we're trying to deal with, but yeah, generally, most people are okay with it. So that's where we're going.
Okay.
Is there a protocol that you have for the staff, for the lifties and employees that you can share with us in terms of COVID that we can potentially send further out to encourage people that there's adequate protections being made or not? I mean, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but just if there was anything that you could share with us.
No, we, we post, well, we have, I guess on our website, most of that's for the general public and for our employees, we've reduced significantly our housing. There's only one person per room. And they're eating in shifts. We no longer have, we've, we've really cut back on the employee meals and getting them together. The patrol will not be in the buckhorn this year. If we have a control morning, we're taking them to Watson's and keeping them separate. We've created a lot of different little pods for employees to take breaks. We're encouraging employees to not be in a, in a closed space with another employee for more than 10 minutes in a day, and they are required to wear masks at all the time. Any employee that has a symptom, we're sent, we're pulling them out of the workforce and then over for a rapid test. We have some temporary quarantine rooms. We put them in until we get the results. We're asking him not to come to work. They're supposed to fill out a daily health screening that they do electronically before they come to work in that regard. And, you know, most of our, you know, typically we've had little meetings where employees would meet in the morning and all of those are being held outdoors rather than in hallways or, or meeting rooms. Just trying to keep as much space and between employees and, and particularly indoor space is just, you know, masks are just required for any size of meeting at any time, any location. And, and that's so far that, that, that seems to be working. And we, we are the most concerned about what do they do when they're not at work?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Torgeson is up next from the UFA.
What do you need? I'll try to catch you up on your agenda. We'll be quick. Um, for UFA, just for fourth quarter to this point, statistics, 12 total calls, 10 of them were EMS calls and two of them were fire calls. That's October, November, and just the first week of December to this point. You know, we're, we're doing a lot of the same things that, that Mike just went over as far as the procedures that we have within our organization for COVID. So I think Alta is doing a fantastic job, it sounds like, with how they're trying to, to keep, keep the resort running. We are seeing increasing numbers of folks that are testing positive today. The numbers I saw were just over 2,500. And unfortunately, a horrible day for deaths, 23 deaths in Utah today. You know, the hospitals are being challenged significantly. The ICUs are being challenged and, you know, the important part even more than, than bed space that's available is personnel to take care of people. And, and that's something that has been extremely challenging and people are being asked to stretch in areas that, that maybe they're not necessarily experienced. Physicians are being asked to work in areas that maybe they hadn't worked in 20 years. Same thing with nursing staff, respiratory therapists. And we're doing the same thing with our staff as well. We are being stretched. We are seeing an increase in the number of that are off, either because they've been exposed or because they have a family member that's sick or they're sick themselves. We still haven't had a single employee that is, that has gotten exposed by providing care to a patient because we're wearing all of our protective gear and it seems like that stuff is working really well. So no one has, has gotten sick or ill from being exposed to a patient. It's all of those outside exposures and, and coming to work and, and we're, we're being careful to try to minimize that spread within our own employee groups. And so I think we're doing a good job. We're putting people off immediately. We have the ability to rapid test with those that have symptoms. So we're trying to do that to keep everyone safe, but we are seeing an increase in our own staffing. Staffing is going to be challenging over the next couple of months. So we have a continuity of operations planned together on how we will deal with staffing. We have people that, that are available to, to be called back to work. Those of us that work in day positions, you know, I volunteer to work on my days off if needed. So we, we won't run short until we absolutely have to. And then we'll make sure our communities know what we're doing in order to still provide coverage. But if we have to reduce staffing in certain areas, we'll, we'll do it in a way that we're able to still provide the best coverage we can. We're, we're also working with Mike as far as putting together plans that will allow us to to have emergency response into the canyons during those times now when the canyon is closed. More hours during the overnight hours when, when canyon is closed, just that coordination between us and UDOT and the town to make sure that if there are already calls that 113 is not able to cover by themselves, that we have a plan together on how we get additional resources up there safely. So we're, we'll continue to work on that with this change in the way the canyon is closed this winter. We'll be moving forward with our inspection process over the next several months. I know that some of your, your community members or maybe your business owners may be concerned with, with that inspection process, bringing people in to do inspections, but just be sure that we will wear our masks. We follow guidelines and procedures to make sure that those that are on duty are not sick. If they have any concerns about that, please, please have them reach out to us and, and you know, we can, we can speak with them and schedule these appropriately to make sure that those, those inspections are taking places so that businesses can stay open and do things safely. I think that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Just, just one. Has the, the board meetings have all gone back to being all virtual, haven't they? Have you been spending
Yes.
time at the EMC?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought. They were, they were for a while and then I, I was always calling in, but this, this way, but I noticed that some people, there were more people for a while and now they're not. So I just hadn't noticed.
Yes.
Just a quick question, if I may. Chief, thank you for that report. Can you help me understand how you think of how you conceptualize the risk level that we're all at at this time, given that given the strains on our hospital systems that you're describing? Like for instance, when I'm, when I'm skiing, I, I realize I need to take a lot off the table because should anything happen that's very serious, I'm straining a system that is already near the breaking point. So I, I just wonder how you talk about that with your staff or how you think about that, if you don't mind, because I'm, I'm really struggling with that.
No, I think that's a great point. I think you know, we, we try to message that with our own personnel that the decisions you make affect everybody in the broad sense. That is a message I think is important, not only to, to take precautions with COVID, but just to take precautions in general so that you aren't taxing the system. So, you know, most hospitals are reducing the number of procedures that they're doing. If they're not necessary, they're reducing those, those procedures. So so that their staff is available to take care of COVID patients. I, I think that the next few months are going to be challenging, you know, for everybody. So whatever we can do to contribute and help out to enable that system not to be taxed, all the better. You know, I'm, I'm really hopeful that the, the vaccination will, will help us. Obviously it will. From what I'm hearing, the first wave will be any day. That will be set aside for hospitals and long-term care facilities. Probably the vaccination that that will be is Pfizer vaccination that has the strict requirements as far as how it's stored and how it's delivered. It's, it's difficult to keep it at those temperatures. Hospitals will have the capability to do that, but in the community sense, that, that's going to be hard to deliver that particular drug to the community. The next wave will be first responders. So that includes EMS, fire, police departments. And I heard from the mayor the other day that ski patrol will be included in that. And that's, that's awesome. So that second wave, we're hoping will take place sometime the beginning or middle of January. That will be coordinated by the county and their plan on how that's going to be distributed. It's still being worked out and fire departments and EMS agencies will contribute and help out where needed. So if we need to help in your area, we're happy to help with that. The county has still yet to, to publish what that plan is going to be.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks. And thanks for staying safe and keeping us safe. All right. The the next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the meeting of November 12th, 2020, the treasurer's report and the staff reports. Is there, I would entertain, welcome a motion to approve those reports.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, very good discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Margaret. Thank you. Any questions about the departmental reports that you have? I've got two, I've got two things to
I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Margaret. I think, I think you've got a little bit of a delay, which is leading to a little bit of overlap. I beg your pardon. Go, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I apologize. My, my question related to Piper's comment that we're 42% or 42% of the year accomplished already, five, five out of 12 months, that we're at 26% of our revenue for the year, not counting the 200K that you've mentioned. And that our expenses are at 42% and that that was, we were on par. But that kind of assumed that we were going to get the additional revenue that we typically get. And so my question maybe is for you, Mayor, or maybe for Piper about what kind of contingency plans and that may be as a result of, or something you were going to raise in new business about addressing a new budget or ending the budget, because it seems to me we need to beforehand establish priorities and whether or not that's been done about the essential services, water, sewer, public safety, so that we're not cutting those things that we really can't cut.
Right. So I, I I've got a couple of things to say about that, I guess. I was, what, one of my comments was to point out what you just referred to really, Margaret, which is that the we are still expecting more than $200,000 in property tax receipts. I guess that, those will come in this month, right, Piper? You, you're, you need to unmute, please.
That's just until, that would be through the first week of December. So there'll still be more than that, but that was the amount that I was expecting in our next payment, which should come tomorrow. Then there will be more money after that, at least another two-week period payment.
Okay, yeah, we have an, we have an unreceived $221,000 in this budget that you prepared for us today.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but that doesn't really address the question of what happens if we don't have, have sales. And so Margaret, one reason to have the budget meeting in January is we will not, in terms of hard receipt numbers, no, but in impressionistic ways, we're going to have a sense of how our Christmas went. And so that was part of the reason to, to have it in January rather than now. Because right now we'd still be guessing about what's going to happen this month, both in terms of the weather and in terms of sales. I, I've got a, as, as the town council knows, and I'll just review this quickly. When we put together the budget in June, we were creative about the way we allocated some money that we had toward this year's budget. And we lowered our assumption for sales tax to 75% of the previous three-year average. That assumption was not probably as tight as I would have liked. I would have liked to have proceeded with 50%. The problem is that we needed to have a balanced budget and we wouldn't have been able to do that without drastic cuts that seemed premature in June, when we had no idea how this rest of this year was going to play out. We know more now than we did in June. We, in June, we expected a second wave of the pandemic and now we have it. So, you know, we didn't know that we were going to get it for sure. For example, so it would have been premature, I think, back in June, and that's the same argument to waiting until January. There are some things we can do, Margaret. One of the worst-case scenarios would be to borrow money from the money we've saved in our sewer and water fund because we have a harder time borrowing to fund operations than we do to fund infrastructure. So that's a possibility. There's, you know, $400,000 in the water fund. And in fact, most of that's owed to the general fund anyway. But so that's one option. We, it depends on how bad we think things are going to get, how long it's going to last. So but it is a discussion we need to have. The other conversation I've been, I've, I've been engaged with the county finance folks pretty extensively on some ideas that I'm not quite able to talk about in public about how there may be some sources of public funding under a new administration. Some of the people who I've spoken with are advising or are on the transition team, the Biden administration's transition team. So there's some hope that there's going to be some federal programs under a new administration. I don't think that we're entirely sure that the 900 billion from, uh, possible, I think. So we'll see. There is not, I have not gotten a lot of encouragement to think about revenue replacement money. I spoke with Senator Romney about that and a little while ago before the election. And he was sympathetic, but not at all encouraging. I spoke with John Curtis, our US representative. And he gave me an idea that was really, this is some time ago, but it was very, very useful. And he said, go to the county. And he knew about this as a former mayor. It was actually quite useful that he had been a mayor. I'm wondering if we've lost Margaret. Are you there? I don't see you anymore. Uh, there you, okay. I just wasn't sure if you were, had turned off your camera or if you were gone. So, um, he suggested that I talk to the county and point out that our, while the first wave of cares money was being allocated per capita, our sales tax, our contribution to the general fund and the tax revenue, that is through the tax revenues at the county, far exceed our, you, the per capita amount on average. So, um, they, they agreed with that argument and, um, we've just, so we, our per capita amount would have been, uh, 12,000 from the first wave and we got about 35, Jen, is that about right? 40, maybe?
Forty-three today.
Forty-three. And then we, on the second wave, we got, uh, some extra. And then just the other day, I asked them for more and they have agreed to give us $15,000 more so that we can, um, transfer some money around a little bit and comply with a requirement for a new records management system, which is going to be part of the budget discussion in January. So, um, that was not, uh, that is not a list of, of, of strategies and priorities, Margaret, which is what you kind of asked me for, but it's, it's what I've been thinking about so far. I don't know if Piper, you have any more to add to that? You, you, the question was posed to both of us.
No, I don't have anything to add to that.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up with the departmental reports is, I may be, you know, I get close to these things and I forget what people do and don't know. But have we, so remind me, have we discussed the road closure, closure issue overnight that Jay was, um, alluding to? I know Cliff was in the last road meeting, but is that something that we should review? Or I should ask Mike to, to make some comments about?
Please do.
Okay, good. All right. Mike, can you, can you say something about the UDOT strategy, please?
Sure. Can you all hear me?
So far.
Yeah. So there's a couple of different components to this. The, uh, uh, first reality that we, um, we were going to have to deal with is when we have avalanche control work occurring in the canyon in the morning. Historically, we've been able to take, uh, the people that come up early in the morning, park their cars in the wildcat lot and shelter them indoors, usually at the gold miners. Due to COVID, we're not going to be allowed to do that sort of thing any longer. So the strategy evolved into when the UDOT forecasters believe control work is likely to be necessary the following morning, we'll implement an overnight closure, uh, beginning at, uh, probably about 12:30 AM the night before the closure. And then we'll have a interlodge going to effect at some point after that. And again, the goal is to, uh, not have people that we can't shelter, um, getting out into the target areas. The second closure scenario, um, also related to COVID is both the Little Cottonwood ski areas have implemented strategies to control the number of skiers, um, along with other methods, uh, by being, uh, proactive in their parking areas, either through reservation systems or spacing out the parked cars so that, uh, fewer cars can, uh, actually be required to fill the lot. So when that happens predictably, uh, we'll fill town parking very quickly. The ski area has been very gracious to have the parking crew, um, out helping us in the middle of the town to create that safer distance between cars. Uh, Snowbird will have the same issue with roadside, uh, parking. So, short story is we believe that, um, the canyon parking capacity is going to be overwhelmed, uh, very quickly. When that occurs, uh, we'll be moving to, uh, what we're calling capacity restrictions, which is, uh, day skiing public will not be allowed, uh, to commute up Little Cottonwood until the parking situation has improved somewhat. You know, we're expecting these to be typically two to three-hour restriction periods. While that's going on, uh, UDOT Unified Police, uh, members from Snowbird and the elseki area will have representatives down at the mouth of the canyon and they'll be screening traffic to make sure that residents, employees coming to work, uh, you know, those with, uh, a valid need to, uh, will still be allowed to come up the canyon. We've had a real rush on resident passes, um, and got restocked today, so we can, uh, we can help a few more people out with that. But I, I do want to say that, uh, there's no reason to panic, that you won't be allowed to come up the canyon if you're coming to work or coming to your home. The screeners at the mouth of the canyon will make sure that that happens.
Is it necessary to have a, a resident pass?
It, it's not a bad idea, you know, uh, in reality, it might speed up the process by 30 seconds. If you pull up to the officer and present the pass, if you've got a driver's license with the Town of Alta address on it, or you've got a utility bill or something else, you know, establishing residence, uh, you'll be fine.
Thanks.
I don't remember, Mike. Do, uh, automobile registrations have your address on them in Utah?
They do.
So presumably that'll be in your car anyway.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay.
One other comment. Please, uh, help us promote our social media through the Town of Alta website, the Town of Alta Twitter feed, the UDOT Cottonwoods, uh, alerting system. Um, they're going to be putting out information as these capacity closures start to develop. So they'll be getting real-time information out. Please be dialed into those so that you can share information with your guests and employees. Also, uh, the ski areas have partnered on a variable messaging sign at the mouth of the canyon and they're assisting us, um, as well as their internal needs with giving real-time, uh, parking status updates.
Good. Okay. Margaret, you're in two places at once.
He said her internet was unstable, so she's.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't working great. We, we could hear you, but it was a little Nazi, you know? So, thanks. Okay, thank you, Mike. Any, anybody have any other questions about the departmental reports or should we move on? Okay, I'm not hearing any. The next thing on the, the agenda is my report. I'm a little less, I, I feel tired and, um, I've also been slow to respond to a couple of phone calls and I apologize for that. It's the end of my semester at the U and it's, um, a pretty busy, um, couple of weeks. Uh, we continue to operate the office, uh, with one staff member at a time, as you know, and no walk-in visitors. We're still on COVID procedures. I still continue to, um, attend the Salt Lake County Mayor's COVID meetings, which are, shorter affairs than they used to be, because I think that people have gotten used to what is going to go on. And they're shorter and glomer, I guess I'd say. Um, current case rate, uh, for 14 days is 1179, which is actually down a little bit. It was up to around, well, around 1500 for a little while. So that's progress. 2,574 new cases statewide, like, uh, Jay said. I am now, I have been appointed, this is, I think, good news, but it's also part of why I feel overextended in some ways. I've now been appointed to the state of Utah's Tourism COVID Recovery Executive Committee. This committee reports to the governor. Um, there's, uh, maybe about nine people on it. I'm the only elected official on the, on the committee. There is, we're supposed to intersect with the, uh, the General Economic Recovery Committee, which is chaired, um, by Taylor Randall from the Business School at the U. And we're also supposed to intersect with the Department of Public Health. There is no health person on the committee itself. It's made up of people like Nathan Rafferty from Ski Utah. Visit Salt Lake, visit Ogden as a representative. Hope Echols from the, uh, Gold, Golden or Hirsch in, in Deer Valley is on it. Couple other, uh, the, the, the gentleman who runs Ruby's Inn and, and, uh, Bryce is on it. The State Director of Tourism, Vicky Varela is the chair of the committee. So we've met once and, uh, we'll see how that, how that goes. I already mentioned that we got some more cares money for the town. We're really happy about that. Uh, Mike mentioned, uh, the ski, ski area open. We've already talked about the seat pace program, so I'll skip over that. Um, and I mentioned a few minutes ago that I've now received the completed report, uh, the completed full report from the MIT team. They've delivered reports to a number of clients about those clients own. So I have all of the reports, but reports have also been given to the UTA and the ski area, to the gold miner's daughter, to the Alta Shuttle and to the Blackjack. It seems that skiing, buses and locker rooms, uh, and lobbies are generally pretty low-risk. But the risk there and everywhere else depends on a number of factors that are partly structural and partly behavioral. So the space, the airflow, the size of the space, the airflow, whether the windows are open, those are structural components. The number of people in the room, the duration of their encounters with each other, whether they're wearing masks and very importantly, the combination of wearing masks and whether people are talking or not, or talking loudly, those are big, uh, factors. So indoor contexts where people can wear masks and stay quiet are pretty safe, actually. I don't know, though, those of you who know, uh, the space, the Blackjack locker room is not a problem. And I was worried that it would be. So I'm happy to, you know, we can have three people in there at a time for 10 minutes at a time if we wanted to, um, and not be very risky. On the other hand, reasonable risk thresholds are exceeded quite quickly when people are indoors, doors, talking and not wearing masks. I've said this before, but, um, I'm going to just keep repeating it because I think people need to keep it at the top of their mind. So this set of conditions has pretty serious implications for food service. And anybody who wants to go through the modeling, I'm happy to, uh, do so. Cliff Curry and I met, I was going to say that on a date, but I don't remember writing it down. But Cliff, Cliff and the skier and, and Mike Mon and, um, I think Ken Librae, I'm confusing all of these Zoom meetings I go to. Mike Maury was on that too. I don't remember. I think so. And we met and Cliff was brainstorming some ideas about how to message in a positive way to our community, things like, did you know that if you stay quiet, you stay safe, for example? And there were some ideas about VMS trailers and other messaging. I did connect with Chris Colley, uh, about that cliff. And, um, I asked the staff to engage ACE and ACVB on some initiatives in that direction. Okay, on this, just a few dates. This was a relatively short list. On November 15th and 16th, the CWC had a two-day mountain transportation summit and we reviewed various modes for transportation in the Central Wasatch. That's a parallel, uh, initiative to the, EIS dot by UDOT and, um, those that you can watch and it was recorded. You can watch as much of that as you want. It's a public document. Essentially, the CWC has called attention to, uh, rail and gondolas uh, rather than as much focus on, um, buses, uh, more exclusive focus on buses, which I think would be a fair characterization of the EIS impulse, if not technically, they are looking at others too. Um, and also the CWC approach included Park City and, you know, the valley in a way that the EIS is limited just to our canyon, for the most part. On November 17th, I attended the UFA, UFSA meetings. Mostly we focused on the leadership, the annual reviews of the leadership of the organizations. On November 19th, maybe some of you saw me, um, on TV, but I was interviewed by Alex Cabrero of KSL about the upcoming ski season. And, uh, the big win in that little clip was, uh, a young man, the likes of whom we have many of visiting us for the day from the valley. And he said, at the very last line was, well, look, I want to ski, but if what it means is, um, keeping my distance and not talking in lift lines, I'm down with that. So I thought that was a really great outcome. On November 19th, I attended the, uh, Council of Governments meeting, which mostly was about homelessness during the pandemic. Jeff Silver Strini, the mayor of Mill Creek, has stepped up in a big way and they're going to have some extra homeless shelters in Mill Creek, which is of course causing him some pushback, but, uh, he's getting some pushback on it, but that's what was happening. One thing that came up in the COG meeting that I'll, that I think is worth conveying is the importance of having a flu, um, vaccination. And, um, there are free flu vaccinations widely available. Uh, we, we discussed whether or not to try to ask them to come up and do a clinic up in Alta, but, um, Dr. Ken has reported already having vaccinated 180 people or something like that. He's out of vaccine, but he doesn't think there are a whole lot of, um, people in Alta who would want to still be vaccinated. But if you know anybody who does, or if you do, there are ways to do this. And, um, uh, the staff and/or I or Salt Lake County Health Department can help you find a free, um, vaccination. On December 3rd, I met with, uh, John Gouldner and I met with the Forest Service and the persons of Becky Hatzi and Ben Crya on some of the jurisdictional authorities. And that's where we, the, 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 the outcome of that, John, feel free to pipe in here if you think I, you need to add something. But I think it was the outcome of that was that email from Becky telling us that we, that, that they, that the Forest Service tends to, does try hard to respect local jurisdictions so long as we aren't actively contradicting what the Forest Service is doing.
Perfectly said.
Okay. The first meeting of that State Tourism COVID Recovery Committee was on the 4th. So it was just last Friday. We've got another one next week. That was basically getting to know you, meeting each other. The one ski area person on there is, uh, Bob Woodward, who was from Altera. Uh, so far, anyway, and the, um, the main issue discussed was messaging, which I thought was a little too limited, but, uh, on December 7th, the CWC met, uh, mostly we reviewed the transportation summit results. And yesterday on December 8th, we had the road meeting that, reviewed those rules that Mike talked about. We haven't had a whole lot of action on the road yet, uh, except. reviewed those rules that Mike talked about. We haven't had a whole lot of action on the road yet, except for a few times, the parking lot's been filled up. Upcoming meetings that you might want to attend, the CWC Board Retreat is on the fourteenth in the afternoon. It's a three-hour meeting. It's a, it's public. It's not our usual board meeting. It's a board retreat to plan the next year. On the fifteenth, I have a UFA, UFSA meeting at seven thirty. The, the Board Retreat Meeting is in the afternoon on that Monday. Hang on a second. I'll tell you just when. It's three PM on the fourteenth. The UFA meeting is at seven thirty AM on the fifteenth. The normal CWC Board Meeting is on the seventeenth. That's not right. Beg your pardon. I wrote that. It's on the, is on the fourth of. I've confused myself. There's the fourteenth and then on the fourth of January is a, is a regular CWC Board Meeting. Okay. Oh, okay. Now I understand why I'm confused. There's a, is, there's, that was the seventh. So we're done with that one. Okay. I'm sorry about that being confused there. Was that clear enough? It's been already, it's a long week and I gotta tell you, I know it's a Wednesday and since about the middle of March, I think every day has kind of felt like Wednesday to me. Dogs, Jen, I know you communicated that to me not too long ago.
I have it right in front of me.
But if you don't mind.
No, I got it too late. So my apologies. I'd be happy to. So these are dog licenses, temporary dog licenses issued between November seventh and December eighth. Ally Miners thirty days starting on eleven thirteen at the Meadows. Tricia Petzold fourteen days, starting on November fourteenth in Peruvian Acres. Kevin McDonald, three days, starting on November fourteenth in Albion Basin. Luke Dennis, fourteen days, starting on November seventeenth in Sugarplum area. Brooke McLean, thirty days, starting on November twenty-eighth by Pass Road. Paxton Mater, thirty days, starting on December first in Powder Ridge. And James Laughlin, eight days, starting on December third at the View.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about that report? Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and possible action on a resolution establishing an internal audit committee. I think Piper, you're probably the point person on this.
Yes, um, thank you. So I, I hope that you read in the consent agenda about, about this item. And so I'm going to start with an explanation of the next item on the agenda, which is the fraud risk assessment. The Office of the State Auditor, in response to general public concern about fraud and abuse, came up with a program that offers guidelines on how local governments can measure their risk and lower their risk. And they, the questionnaire you may have seen, it's two pages. And one of the major parts of that is the, is the separation of duties, which we do pretty well on. Minus a few exceptions, but we have mitigating controls for that. And then on the second page, there are, there's a point system and there are different written policies and unwritten policies that make up a point system. And when you add all those up, we measure, as of today, we would measure in the high risk. There is one, the last thing on that point page, the fraud risk assessment page, number nine, talks about a formal audit committee, and that's one of the that would be a group of people to perform an internal audit function, which basically is checking management's work. They trace deposits from when they come in the door till they go into the bank and then show up on our statements. And then they do it the other way. If there's a an expense that goes out, you know, they trace that back to the invoice and if the, and verification if the work was performed or the product was received. So it all, that audit committee would also check things like our separation of duties and our procedures there. And make sure that we have written policies. So right now, a lot of the policies are written into our employee handbook, but they're fairly general and, and a little bit weak. And we're, we've already drafted. The State Auditor actually offers templates on, on more detailed and stronger policies and we're looking at those. But the, the thing about the formal audit committee is if you did institute one today, I could fill out this questionnaire and give ourselves twenty points for that, which puts us right on the, right in the middle of the moderate risk zone. Otherwise, we were just at the high point of or the low point of the high risk. So it's up to you. I was in the consent agenda, I asked for a committee that would be comprised of the mayor and two council members, but Polly pointed out that that would be a quorum and that would have to be a public group. I'm actually thinking that it should be the mayor and one council member with an advisor being our external accountant, Steve Rowley, who actually is here now with us. I don't know if he can unmute himself or if he wants to add anything to this, but if you have any questions, counsel, please feel free to ask.
So we're, we're not going to get the ten points for sending anybody to get a bachelor's degree in accounting. I don't think that's reasonable.
Not on our staff, but if, if Steve was the the advisor to the audit committee, he would get the twenty points for forty hours of formal training. And he's also on the management team and he does have a, more than a bachelor's.
All right. So that would, that would help then. Okay. But it also wouldn't be that difficult to have a statement of ethical behavior that all of the employees and the town council does agree to. And in fact, I've been asked to sign one of those as a Central Wasatch Commission Member and as a UFA Board Member.
We've got those drafted, but they were not in effect as of June of twenty twenty. So it wouldn't be effective here, but no matter how we score on this questionnaire, before the end of the calendar year, we hand it into the state, I'm confident that we can improve our score by a hundred points by the end of fiscal year twenty-one.
Good, right. Okay. I was just, okay. So, so there are things that we can do for sure.
The, the question to the council on this particular item is whether or not you want to have a formal audit committee or whether you want our external accountant to perform a formal internal audit function. You know, we would be paying him a certain amount of hours for that. I'm not sure if he can estimate those hours or Steve, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
There he is.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Yeah. In terms of how much the internal audit procedures and things would cost would really depend on how thorough and what procedures the internal audit committee or the council would want performed. So for example, if you wanted, you know, a sample of thirty transactions done just once every quarter, then that would be, you know, X number of hours. Whereas if you wanted that type of level of transactions done every month, or you want us to look at policies, if you want us to look over the, the town's compliance with the procurement policies, those types of things, you know, all kind of add up and that really is just dependent on how thorough again, the council wants that internal audit process to be done.
Is there any kind of standard that we can pick how thorough we want to be?
Some of the, well, interestingly enough, there is no minimum requirement that the fraud risk assessment puts out. If you have an internal audit committee, then you get the points regardless of how thorough or how unthorough that is. Now it would be a disservice to say that we want to just do a bare minimum. We'll look at a bank reconciliation, for example, and call it good. You know, ideally, we want to look to, want to protect the, the assets of the town, the financials and make sure things are good. So I've, in the past, I've sent, or I have a list of like proposed procedures that can be done. And it kind of includes pulling a sample of procurements to see if you're following the policies related to that. If there's, you know, like BNC road money, that's restricted. We could do a sample of those to make sure that those expenditures are qualifying to use those restricted funds. Same thing with like impact fees. Additionally, with, you know, CARES Act money, if there's specific guidance and restrictions for those monies, which there is, then we would test that as well. And then additionally to that, we would look to see, you know, pull a sample of expenditures to see are those being coded correctly? Are they being coded in the right period? You know, there's all kinds of things that, that we can do and some of that can be done at one part of the year and another part, you know, another quarter or another month, for example. And kind of once a, a list of ideas or a list of procedures is kind of established, then we could certainly, you know, give an idea of, you know, what that would, would cost for us to do that. Or if you wanted to have, you know, internally, you could do some of that internally.
And the State Auditor also offers guidelines on that internal audit function and, and how to do that. But it wouldn't require too much time, I would think, from this committee because, well, the mayor, when you used to come into the office, you used to perform that kind of thing, checking over some statements and tracing things back. Maybe not the written policies, but our written policies, like I say, we've got those drafts ready to, to go, close to ready to go. So whatever the council decides. Go ahead, Cliff. Unmute yourself. Yeah.
Hi Steve, nice to meet you. Should I assume that if we did form an audit committee that would include? Excuse me, I lost the thread. Was it the mayor and one council member? Is, is that right? Steve, I'm assuming that you would sort of lead the work and, and sort of direct that audit committee. Hold their hand.
Yeah, certainly. Whatever we want to do. I mean, ideally, the way that that works is we would meet together as a committee and decide what needs to be done within this, within the town to see what would get the best bang for our buck, for lack of a better phrase, right? We want to make sure we're doing as much as we can, but still being frugal with, with the public funds. And then once we create kind of a schedule of procedures to be done, then whether we try and do that internally or we have somebody else do that, then we would have that individual return and report to the Audit Committee or the Full Council, however you want to handle that, and say, this is what we tested. These are the results of that test. This is what we recommend to be done. Or these are some other things we recommend, maybe looking at further next time, that type of conversation. So yeah, I'd be more than happy to, to help hold hands and keep things on track there.
One question. What difference, I, I, there's an obvious answer to this. I appreciate, but what besides the risk itself are the implications of a higher or a lower score on the fraud risk assessment? Vis a vis the state.
Yeah, good question. So the state is really just trying to see how cities and towns and municipalities are handling fraud risk, whether they're even considering it. And then it provides some best practices on kind of the, the bare minimum, what you can do to help prevent that. The state, from what I understand, is they will be using those scores as at least this first year's score, though, let's just kind of take our temperature of the, the entire state, see where everybody's at. It's expected that this will be an annual thing, at least for several years, I would assume. And what they want to see is improvement. If there is, you know, if you end up being a high fraud risk according to their level and you do nothing to improve year over year, they did say that they may use that as an incentive to come in and, and visit the town or city or wherever and to say, what's going on, guys? Do you not take this seriously? This is some things you need to do. They did not say that they threatened any property tax withholding or anything like that, but that's within the realm of possibility, certainly if there is no improvement.
Well, so being where we are now gives us all kinds of opportunities to improve. And if they're going to do this over multiple years, maybe we want to improve a little bit every year.
Yeah, that's certainly, certainly an option. Several cities are taking that approach. They'll work on a couple of things now. It looks like going down the, the fraud risk assessment for Alta, there's a lot of the points can be gained pretty easily just by updating policies and things like that. But other things, you know, like the internal audit side, that's a little more extensive. If you wanted a fraud risk or a fraud hotline, that's something that you could look at down the road. There's not a whole lot of points in that. So, yeah.
And another thing to consider is you don't necessarily want to save some of your things to improve every year because once you've achieved a low risk, they're not trying to get rid of all risk, especially with a small town with a small staff. So once you get to that point, as long as you can keep following those policies, you're, you're.
And who knows, maybe there's an award for the most improved and we'd want to do it all. Well, so I guess the question for the council is in a year in which, and this kind of dovetails with the budget issue a little bit too, is in the year when we are still pretty uncertain about our sales tax revenues, which of these initiatives would you like to do now? I think is a question. And, you know, there are some that'll be cheap. Right? Essentially just asking us to sign promises, for example, right, to be ethical.
Right, but we're not going to ask you that today. We're, we're really only asking about the Audit Committee now. And it's not necessary for you to approve it now. I mean, we can still, we still fill out the assessment. We just rate a little bit higher risk.
Right. No, I understand. And, and the, the thing about the, the thing about the internal audit is if, to the extent that we use more consulting time from Steve, there is a, there's a cost implication to that one. That's why I mentioned it.
As a general precept, I think it's better to keep tracking the money in-house. And, and so I'd be happy, even in a very busy year, to volunteer as part of whatever committee we need to create to decrease the risk of fraud and also have a closer sense amongst the legislatures, legislators of the town as to what's happening with our funds.
That is another benefit of, if, to having an audit committee that the council, the committee gets a more intimate view of, of the operations of the, the financial operations of the town. And, and they in turn can report to the, to the full council on that.
The only thing I would recommend that Piper mentioned at the very beginning is that you need to find a third person that's not a council member because there's a real issue of if you're looking, you don't want it to be a quorum because then you need it to be an open public meeting, minutes, recording. recording, all of a sudden, nothing is really confidential, and for these type of inquiries, it just, it doesn't meld well.
Polly, do you think it's necessary to have three on the committee? I know that that's usually good if you're, if you have a conflict or or decisions that have to be made, but if it's really a functional.
Yeah, I don't see a legal, I think that's a good point, I don't see a legal requirement, I don't know, Steve, do you have any, especially where you have, you know, it wouldn't be a vote, but you'd have three people kind of looking at it, so what what's your opinion, Steve?
Yeah, i- in terms of decision making, I don't believe there is any instance where the audit committee would make a formal binding you know, approval on behalf of the town at all. In fact, ideally, what would happen is the audit committee would meet and discuss these things, they would come up with the plan for the internal audit procedures, then that would be presented to the full council for the council's approval to to do any of that. So I I don't know that it would be required to have three people, if two would be sufficient, the mayor and a council member, for example. Then all decisions would just flow up to the full council where in, but then still with keeping with those non-public meetings with just the audit committee, that's where the more sensitive information could be discussed. You know, if there was specific names or, you know, individuals or dollar amounts that were concerned with or questioned or anything like that, that would be that would remain confidential.
If if I could speak without interrupting somebody, sorry if I am. What I was looking at in the risk assessment was that it seemed that there were a number of things that could be done, as as you mentioned before, Harris, very easily, very quickly, and with less cost and less time commitment as well, where the employees annually make a written commitment about abiding by ethical behavior, and that seems like something we should have, period. And that the board members have four-year training through the auditor's website, and as I looked at that, that was an hour-long commitment. So that seems to be something as well with no cost involved. And then a written policy of conflict of interest, which probably would require some drafting, although if there are templates on the website, so those three things alone would get us forty-five points. Absent a fraud hotline and and absent this committee that may need to be thought out more how it's done. Because I realize that, as I looked at the language and what we were provided, it talked about the mayor being the the board chair of this particular committee, I believe. But it seems to me that the mayor, as the manager of the town, being in a position to review management, it absolutely seems like a conflict of interest, and so I guess I'm not clear on this whole process of how this audit committee is made up of people that are doing the management decisions, reviewing the management decisions that are being made. So it may be that I misunderstand, and so I thought maybe these other things may be easier to accomplish, faster achieve, and at less cost of both time and money.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, if it didn't include the mayor, that would be okay with me.
It would not have to include the mayor, it could just be two council members.
Obvious candidate, frankly.
I've got a lot going on, but you know. We all do.
I mean, I think Margaret's point is
Considering the time, do you want to introduce this, and it sounds like maybe at this time, the council might and then we can address the questionnaire in the next item number on on how we score.
So Piper, you, you, at least for me, you broke up a number of times in that, so I couldn't really make out what you were saying, you had a proposal about moving forward, I think, but I didn't quite catch it.
I didn't know if the council wants to act on the resolution. And if they're not interested in establishing a audit committee at this time, we can move forward to the presentation of the fraud risk assessment in the next item.
I see. Well, so, so this gets, this is going to be submitted soon, and this is meant to be an assessment of our twenty twenty risk, right?
Yes.
So we do have three weeks left in the year, if we did those things that Margaret mentioned, we would be better than not doing those things, can we get those done in three weeks? I guess is part of the question.
Steve, isn't this supposed to be fiscal year twenty?
The requirement was that it be filled out and presented by the end of the fiscal year, but I think as long as the points that are awarded are, that are at least added up on there are effective as of the date it's presented and signed by, you know, yourself and, you know, one of the council or the mayor, then that would be fine. The intention was for it to be for fiscal year end twenty, but if we get those points on and get it approved and signed and uploaded, you know, by December thirty first, I think that would be fine.
So we can definitely get the ethical behavior pledge and policy done by the end, because they're close now. The online training would all four of the town council commit to finishing that one-hour training?
As long as you specifically identify which of the one-hours on the stated auditor's website, is it just the elected official one-hour training, or is there some other, because there's multiple?
Steve, do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, I I can get the link to which ones, there's about a dozen videos on there, and there is a specific set that they're talking about. I can get that link to Piper, and she can forward it on, and it's it's about forty-five minutes, maybe fifty minutes, I think, it's the last time I I reviewed it, so.
Combined or each one, Steve?
I think in total, I think there's five or six videos that make up the the batch.
To those two things. And then I think that Margaret had her points well taken, that I can see that someone in the mayor's position could well, it seems to me that a mayor could be embarrassed by a report of an audit committee, and that therefore the, a mayor might have an incentive not to have the audit committee be as robust as it might otherwise be. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
So Yeah, that's, that's a good point, I assume that, for example, the audit committee could consist of two council, two town council members, and potentially a longstanding member of the Alta community who has a background in finance and accounting. Yeah, or or it sounds like Steve is available to advise if it's just two town council members, too. Okay, so to proceed, we do have this item on the agenda, ag- agenda item eight, discussion and possible action on twenty twenty or twenty-one. So do we want to act on it, we've had the, we've had a bit of a discussion, if we do want to act on it, we need a motion, and then if there's an amendment, we can, we can change the resolution from what it says.
Well, procedurally, we could, I don't know if we could make a motion to do the things that we were just talking about, that we move that the council members commit to the online training at the state auditor's website, that the council members fill out the written commitment to abide by ethical behavior and written conflict of interest policy within the next two weeks in lieu of the resolution of the internal audit committee right now, and put that off for another time.
So did Piper, I think I might have missed this, did you say the conflict of interest statement would be ready shortly, or just the? Okay, good. You know, I don't know, I don't know if we need a resolution, or if we just need, and and I don't know if a resolution to that effect, is that kosher, Polly, to change? You know, we don't have a written resolution, we we need some kind of agreement amongst the council members to do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a resolution in writing.
Okay, so what are the other things, we just make a motion to do this? Is that true, or we just agree?
I think you can just agree, unless it helps the somehow the audit, if they need that formality, does it refer to that at all, Piper?
Well, if we're not going to have the audit committee, that's fine, and we don't have to vote on that resolution. I, it wouldn't hurt to have a vote that the council agrees to institute the numbers of whatever it is you want to agree to, and then report to me in two weeks that it's done, and I can fill this out and have somebody sign it, so you don't need a resolution to fill out the questionnaire or the assessment.
Yeah, can we just informally commit that we're going to do those things, I commit?
Yeah.
Me too.
Well, yeah, why don't you have a vote, so that Piper can share the these minutes and
They just voted, and Harris, did you vote that or commit to that? Okay.
Great.
I will have the ethical behavior and the training question to you, and and the conflict of interest in the next day or a couple of days.
Okay, if you, if you can get that to us this week, and we can all return it and let you know that we have completed this by two weeks from today, which would be the twenty-third, still before Christmas, will that work for everybody?
Yes. Assuming we can provide the document to you virtually, I mean, we're not, we obviously can't come into the office to sign it, so we're going to send it via email or let us know what the procedure is.
Yes, I will.
Do you, Margaret, do you have a printer? At home?
Yes, I do.
So if you print it, you can sign it, and then if you don't have one, it's easy to obtain an app for a phone that's a scanner. And then I've been using that for months now in my role as department chair and whatever. Hasn't tagged me for that yet, it's a little cumbersome. But if you need me to sign stuff that way, Piper, I can do it, I've I've sometimes done things other ways with the staff, too.
I'm just going to bring up one thing, I just wanted Steve to be able to address the audit update, because I know he has another council meeting in sixteen minutes. Steve, do you want to quickly go over the audit progress?
Yeah, if that's okay, Mayor.
Please.
Okay, so quick update, the audit seems to be going very smoothly, especially given the late start, since we switched auditors so late in the game, they're almost done, I talked to the audit partner yesterday about it, and he said he should have the opinion letters and everything ready within the next few days. So I expect we'll see that before the end of the week. So that's great, we'll have that ready to upload to the state auditor's office well before the twelve thirty-one deadline. There were two findings that he mentioned that are likely, we should expect to see two findings from the audit. The first one being the general fund, or it's the fund balance limitation. So the the general funds fund balance is supposed to be limited to seventy-five percent of the general funds revenues for the fiscal year. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, we're over that, so we're going to have a finding for that. That one's a fairly easy one to correct going forward, and all that really does mean is we happen to save some additional money than that we didn't have to transfer over to the capital projects fund yet. So I don't see that as being a serious issue, and it's certainly easy to fix. The second finding is related to the fraud risk assessment itself, and as I mentioned earlier, that that is, was supposed to have been done and presented to the council by June thirtieth. This finding will be fairly common for a lot of entities, because there wasn't a whole lot of advertisement from the state auditor's office on when to get all this out and do this. And again, it's an easy one to fix, you're already in the process of fixing it, it will be done and uploaded by December thirty first, so that's just a, you know, you should have done it, but didn't, it'll be right going forward. Those I I I see as being serious issues at all, so.
That's good news, and I'll note that this fraud risk assessment is dated March of twenty twenty, so something got in the way of usual operations in March of twenty twenty, so.
Just a little bit.
My guess is we won't be alone.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Steve, that's, that's very encouraging, and thank you, Piper, for making that that much progress on the audit, I know it was a late start with a new auditor, but I think that, I know you've been working hard on it, and Steve has been a great asset. I I know, both in terms of his advice to Piper, and also this, this kind of dovetailing with the with the audit, so thank you.
I second that, Steve, thank you very much for all your help.
All right, now you can go do something. You have to commute to another town now.
Yeah.
Yeah, just ten minutes away. I'm going to head out now, thanks.
Thank you. Just, just to reiterate, Mayor, if I may, if we still want to form that committee, I I would be interesting interested in serving on it, if any other council members would like to join me.
Good, thanks for that volunteer, for that volunteer spirit. And I don't think you're from Tennessee, are you? You're from Michigan. Okay. So we've really, I guess what we're, we're not going to take any action on number eight, we've discussed number nine on the agenda, and we've discussed number ten on the agenda. So the next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on the land use ordinance amendments. What, what's your pleasure on that? I think that we still have some work to do on this on this document, figure a couple of things out. I know that Cliff and I spoke last week about postponing it another time, but there's been a little bit more clarity in the last week than Cliff and I were where we were last week, I think. So Polly, you want to make a recommendation, or anybody else want to? John, make a suggestion about how we proceed?
I, I'll defer to how the council, if they feel comfortable enough, I have, you know, we have the new language from a couple of days ago that makes it clear between the private prop, you know, US Forest Service property and not, and then I have some new language that refers to requiring a permit where Utah building code would require, I get that it's a little bit of interpretation when that's supposed to be, but I think that that was the kind of distinction that that we wanted. But that being said, if, I also know that it's hard to look at something last minute, it's not that lengthy, but it's, so, I, it's up to what the council thinks, it would be really nice to put the, these land use ordinances to bed, though.
I think it'd be, it'd be nice to put it to bed, but at the same time, I feel like every time we have these these short little thirty-minute work sessions, we like make a little teeny change, and I'm kind of at the point where I need to still every, before every town council meeting, I read the whole entire document. And it's almost like we need to make a change, and then I kind of need to read the whole entire document again. So I would prefer to probably see these changes that we got from them this meeting after talking to Laura and what John said with the building official and and then maybe look at the documented as a whole again. Is that's where I'm leaning.
My, I guess one thing was that uh Cliff had proposed last time uh that maybe we consider looking at this and putting together instead of the whole package again is that could we potentially have two motions, two ordinances, one that we maybe could just completely get taken care of at a January meeting because it is not in dispute and that the areas where there still is concern or questions or that we maybe haven't resolved today um that that be a separate document so that, as Ali says, each time you're not reviewing fifty four pages of language and then just unclear about whether you read that the last time or whether it's in this one. So I I guess I would like to see that to the extent that we can put on the table what we can get through and finished in January, and then if it's not going to be all of it, that that be kind of a separate document. I my understanding and John's been really good at kind of flushing out what's outstanding. But I thought that we were that this was it, that there wasn't really any other major stumbling bo- blocks in it. Um, with the caveat, of course, that it is a living document. My worry from a legal standpoint is, and maybe what we have existing is better than what we're proposing, or one would prefer to keep that. But if you separate out certain sections and then continue that discussion, we're gonna have to renotice it. So that's a long process as well. It should go back to the planning commission. I would almost, I would, you know, so it's a judgment call of, oh, are the changes proposed? You know, is there controversy around them? Or is there indecision around them? I I thought we were, I thought this was it, but maybe I'm wrong on that. Well, I've had multiple language that I have put out for many a month, many a month. And that's been looked at by Cliff to a certain extent. It's been looked at by John, but it's never gotten in front of the council. So whether or not that's something that we want to do or not, but I think to assume that we have been through everything, that we've resolved everything, I'm not sure is an accurate statement. And it may be that I'm just the only one that has uh questions or concerns that haven't been addressed yet. Um, but that's something that I've had language out there for a long time.
So I I was a per I was in favor of splitting this out and trying to vote, uh, you know, things that we could pass and things that we could still, you know, work on. But after reading the document, there are so many things that are kind of tied together that I think it's really, I actually now think it'd be hard to just vote on part of this to just to get it out of the way. It's there's so much language that we have changed in here, you know, when it comes to definitions and when it comes to waterway setbacks. I mean, there's so many things that tie together. I just don't know if we can vote on just half of it and then leave the other, you know, part of it up. I think Polly's right. I feel like this needs to be voted on with a clear understanding of the whole document and all the changes that are the implications. Um, so that's just kind of where I'm I've landed at right now.
I I have, I know that I've focused mostly on these recent changes, and I would I wouldn't benefit from a full read of the whole thing again myself. Cliff, it looked like you wanted to say something, Cliff.
Well, um, I just did not want to give short shrift to the things that council member Burke brought forward. Um, the the things that um my colleague brought forward. I believe those were not things that the planning commission had considered all along throughout this process, which doesn't make them, you know, not fair game, um but they just didn't get a hearing. And so, for example, I I believe that some of the concerns about designating an interlodge contact, those can be, I I support that. But it doesn't need to be part of our land use code. It's a public safety issue. Um, some of the other uh ones such as revisiting um some of the uh rooftop setbacks and some matters like that. Again, I don't, I didn't think that those were things that were ever considered by um the planning commission or throughout this six-year process. And so I didn't support bringing them in this late in a five and a half, six-year process, but certainly would um support um returning and considering those. Um, so it hasn't been my intent to give short shrift anything that my colleagues brought forward.
When you say um re to considering those, you mean after passage of this is what you meant, right? I just want to make sure I understood you.
Could we possibly have a full hour work session um specific to this ordinance? To bring forward any other other folks that we'd like to weigh in and also talk more thoroughly amongst ourselves to hear our full thinking?
I um I don't want, I I I've spent three or four hours on ranked choice vote voting. I want to give you a report on that uh at the next work session. Mike Mon has asked me to have parking issues at a work session as well. He has.
What about a special meeting in before the next council meeting and work session could have a special meeting? Because I
Just talk about.
I think you could talk more than an hour about.
Oh, yeah.
I I think that's a fairly elegant solution.
I am not going to be available for the next week for an extra meeting. I am, I am pretty much at my wit's end, frankly. I need some time off.
Um, I I for.
New Year's maybe, but I I can't do it this week in the next week.
Yeah.
I was just talking about January.
I was gonna say January would work for me. The closer we get to the holidays, um, the busier I am going to be at work. So if we wanted to have a special work session after the New Year's, um, I might be able to do that, but um this the the closer we get to Christmas, the harder it gets.
I I thought.
Understood.
I thought that uh Piper meant before the next town council meeting, which would be on the thirteen.
That's on the thirteenth, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was the week I was I was misremembering when the second Wednesday was. So I think that between, you know, the first or second week of January makes, I I can make time then. My grading will be done.
That would work for me.
Yeah, maybe January sixth or something like that.
I could do three to four on January sixth. I have a four o'clock commitment already on on the sixth that I can't avoid. Can do it at five.
Do we, I'm sorry, do we haven't agreed to, is the sixth work?
I'm proposing three to four on the sixth.
Mayor, forgive me. Any chance we could do the seventh or eighth?
Uh, either of those days would work for me.
Depends.
It worked for me.
I'm sorry, I can't do the seventh. I could do the eighth.
What time of day do you do you have in mind?
Any, I'm wide open on the eighth.
I could do um I'm going to assume that the Salt Lake County COVID meetings continue. So how about eleven?
Works for me.
Eleven to twelve.
Okay.
Eleven AM, okay.
Does it work for other council members?
Already on my calendar.
Does that provide enough time before the town council meeting uh to um get something drafted and distributed? That was why I focused a week ahead of time. Um, in fact, but I just want to make sure that that's not too close.
Well, we can still make it's twenty four hours, Piper, or forty eight?
About twenty four.
So, okay, so to give this gives staff Polly and John two days after the meeting?
Right.
For to post it Tuesday morning?
Well, that's for the agenda, right? We could have the agenda item on there and not necess, oh, well. Right, we would want attachment to the rest to the ordinance, I guess.
Well, there's plenty of people who are going to want to see this and and have a chance to review it. Uh, I'm specifically thinking of Alan Orr and Mike Mon.
It's pretty tight.
And Dell Draper.
I I'll be honest, I don't, I mean, I guess I'm fine having a work session on the eighth, but I don't I don't see us probably getting to a point where we would pass something on the thirteenth. Um, I mean, maybe, but I think maybe more if we have a work session on the eighth, this is more for a February meeting because I think there are a lot of people that would want to review this.
True. And another thing to think about it, it's a lot of times when you're doing ordinances, you've got something in mind that you're you're aiming at maybe changing, redirecting, or stopping. We we don't have any, at this point, I know Cliff is shuddering, we don't have any critical time uh elements related to this. It's not like if we don't, if we don't do this in January, a high rise is going to go up on uh Patsy Marley. So I hate to say that, but you know, it there's not a time crunch. So when you're comfortable.
It sounds like eleven on the eighth it is?
Yeah. So do you guys want it as a work session then? Because you don't think that, okay. Because, you know, a lot of towns will discuss it and then they pass it at the same meeting, but that sounds revolutionary. So um, we don't have to do that.
With this project, it is.
So I could go in the other direction and make it the fifth. If you guys are available that day, that would make it a little more comfortable to having the thing done.
I could do that.
Yeah, say the fourth or the fifth is fine with me.
I I can do those earlier days is as long as we wrap by three PM.
So Margaret, what about moving this from eleven on Friday to sometime in the morning on Tuesday? Eleven on Tuesday? Does that work for people Tuesday, the fifth?
Yes.
Cliff? Sorry, I said a thumbs up or a thumbs down. You're I you I you I'm not hearing you.
What if it's a Potter day?
I know. That's why I said eleven and not nine.
One o'clock?
One o'clock's fine with me, too.
I'm kidding.
So what time?
Do it at noon and watch each other eat lunch. Which usually is to be avoided on Zoom, I've found.
I love it. I think still let's do eleven on Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll make that'll make everybody's life and the staff a lot more comfortable, I think.
Cool. I just haven't is has Margaret weighed in? I can't I can't hear her.
She gave a thumbs up.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Okay, uh, it's now five after six. So let's move to um the only new business I was going to raise is that um we probably should plan on on a work session on the thirteenth um and talk about the budget amendments. I mean, there's going to be plenty to talk about. Mike wants to talk about parking. We could talk about ranked choice voting. I'd like to go through the budget process. So um
And has that date picked?
We'll have to have a public hearing that day as well.
Right. Okay, so there's a bunch. So let's have a work session on the on the thirteenth at four. Other new business? Motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, just a second. When you said that the work session on the thirteenth was at four?
I meant.
Free, right?
Beg your pardon.
Yeah, okay.
My town council meetings didn't get up. I I don't know. I didn't update it. The town council meeting was at the wrong time. No, I meant three.
And what do you want on the work session besides the ranked choice voting?
Um, budget amendment discussion and um
Parking.
Alta Ski Lift's proposal for expanding their parking lots.
And the public hearing, do you want during the work, uh, would do that right before the regular meeting?
What's the public, what is that?
Public hearing about the budget.
No, let's do that in the town council meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to also publicly applaud applaud you for the work you did with and are doing um to disseminate the information about the MIT study with Harvard Public Health. Um, it's so valuable. It it is on the vanguard. I wonder if, is there any way that uh we as council members can help you disseminate that more widely within the community? Are there documents that we can use or have access to, or is that all can still consider proprietary?
Well, the report, um, I I have to look, but the report is on a webpage and um it's in the format of like what you saw at the town council meeting last time. And um I don't remember how much I don't know that they, I I told the 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 team that they needed permission from the various clients to put actual client information up there because that only seemed appropriate. So let me take a look at that and I'll let you know. Um, the 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 model contained in the spreadsheet is not a public document yet, as far as I have been told. But um if there's somebody who wants to know about a particular variable on what we've already talked about, and I'm happy to show that to somebody in a one-on-one meeting or, you know, like what you and I did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just, I forgot to put this in my staff report, but it's probably better that I do it in person anyways. Um, I wanted to just let the council know how much time and effort that the mayor has been putting in on this CARES funding that we've been getting. And um he's done a tremendous job. He's been tireless at this. And I don't know that his comments earlier adequately reflected the amount of funding that Alta has gotten because of his efforts. Um, we're getting a total of a hundred and forty four thousand dollars um of CARES funding, um, which is huge for us. And I just, Mayor, I want to thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks. I I mean, you you've all been working really hard on this stuff and trying to, you know, we we we're working hard together to stay afloat.
Yeah.
Stay healthy.
Yes.
All right, Cliff, I hope you have uh I hope you have a good Christmas season. This will be the last town council meeting before that, and you're the you're the person on this call who is closest to the business community himself, I think. So.
Uh, we're gonna hang in there. We're gonna get through this. We're gonna uh support each other. Uh, so uh, uh, thank you all, colleagues.
Okay, well, um, I'm sure we'll be talking, but have a good um holiday. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. I can't just close the Zoom meeting like. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. I can't just close the Zoom meeting like it's a class.
I, I will second it and wish everybody happy holidays.
Okay, all in favor.
Happy holidays. Happy Hanukkah.
To adjourn.
Hi.
Okay, you're adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Good night.